About a hundred in Highway A, we'll get a hundred and ten. Those aren't the exact numbers. All the, the bridge grants, the local restructures grant, all those were funded at a higher level than last year. So that, that's good news. One thing it's on the, I noticed in the select board packet was concern with catalytic converters being stolen. And I am working with a legislator from Granby, Vermont. How many people know where Granby, Vermont is?
Rochester.
It's up there. Anyway, we haven't, we haven't come up with a solution that can be done at the state level. The catalytic converters don't have any tracking on them. And the only thing we've come up with is, they're actually, she's actually presented a bill that's sitting in committee but hasn't been worked on, that would prohibit transportation of catalytic converters at night. Maybe that's a Band-Aid approach. I'm not sure. It would be very effective. In talking it over with, like Kobe Hodgson, who legitimately deals in catalytic converters, the ultimate solution would be if the catalytic converters had a serial number on them associated with the VIN number of the car. If you instituted it tomorrow, it wouldn't help. It might help the dealers as they get new cars in, but it isn't going to help the ones that are sitting in everybody's driveway. But it has something that needs to be done. It's a chronic problem, not only in Vermont, not any corner in Vermont, they're getting stolen left and right. The value of the precious metals that are in those is skyrocketing, so it's even more lucrative. And there doesn't seem to be any really good way to break the chain from when they're stolen to when they find it to a legitimate dealer. You, I saw on your packet that you're going to be talking about the ARPA money. And there seemed to be a pretty good packet in there. And nothing's changed on the categories that you can spend it on. As far as bills that, that have been passed, there's none that have any huge effect on, on town government. There's a couple of voting ones that will have some effect. There's two, I want to bring up two constitutional amendments that are going to be discussed probably very early in January. One of them is, is pretty simple, in my mind. Vermont's always prided itself on being the first state in the country to prohibit slavery and threaten our constitution when it's originally written. But when you read it carefully, if prohibit slavery for anyone over 21. So the constitutional amendment will, will clean that language up, so it's just plain, slavery will be illegal. The other constitutional amendment is going to be considerably more controversial. And that's a woman's right, reproductive rights. I think everybody's going to have a really strong opinion on those. My gut feeling is though, that they've already, constitutional amendment to be passed in Vermont has to be voted in the affirmative by two-thirds in both houses for two consecutive sessions. It's already made it through one session, now it's in this session. And I don't like to bet, but my feeling is that both of them will pass. Then the citizens get to vote on it. And if all falls into the schedule by, in November, you're going to see two constitutional amendments to vote on in November. Governor Scott vetoed a bill. We back up. There were, there were two bills for charter changes, one for Winuski, one for Montpelier. Winuski has a significant foreign presence of people that have moved to the state. And Winuski has picked up a ton of people. Anyway. Montpelier also has fairly significant foreign population. And what the, what the charter changes involved were to allow non-citizens to vote in local elections. What that means is, giving Weathersfield as an example, in November, non-citizens could vote on the town budget. And in Weathersfield, they could vote on the school budget. In Windsor, they couldn't because it involves two towns. They could vote on the town budget, so if, if the school budget involved more than one municipality, then the non-citizens wouldn't get to vote on it. But that only pertained to those two towns. And Governor Scott vetoed it because he'd like to see a uniformed system across the state. What, that would have a significant effect on the ability to maintain a checklist. You'd almost have to have two checklists, and nobody's quite figured out exactly how that's going to work. I got a feeling they'd just say, "Town clerk, you figure it out." Anyway, that, those are the big things that are coming up. And like I said, the, the last session that ended May 22nd, there was a lot of social issues that were addressed, a ton of school stuff that I'm going to the school board meeting tomorrow night. Have we got the school tax rate yet?
I don't think so.
Must be coming pretty quick. I, I know the, the numbers, ours is still going to go up substantially, but not as much as people anticipated. Back when budgets were being prepared, it was looking really gloomy. There's a number called the yield number. And I think most people know this, but in case you don't, the education is funded not strictly by property taxes. It's, the purchase and use, 100%, if you buy a car and you pay a thousand dollars in tax, that goes into the ed fund. 100% of the lottery profits go into the ed fund. Part of the room's immune, it's taxed, it goes into the ed fund. There's one more that goes in. So anyway, it comes from multiple different choices or sources. And let me get the number right. The property tax is, I think, about 45% of the, of the total amount. So you do the math, it comes, so there's a number called the yield number. And because the economy has done considerably better than was anticipated back when budgets were being prepared. And I'll tell you what the big thing is, that the sales tax, because it's now on internet sales, it has taken huge increases in revenue. So, so the, the school tax portion is looking better than we thought it would, back when budgets were being prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I, I have a question for clarity. What does the term "non-citizen" stand for?
It takes, on average, five years if you come to this country to get citizenship.
Okay.
So the people that are in that transition period, they're living in, in the town, they're paying taxes in the town, their children are going to school in the town. And, and the, the argument, people got a pretty strong opinion, one way or the other, whether this is appropriate. But the, the pro argument was, it gets the people involved in their community more. They would not vote on national elections, they would not vote on state elections. It would be strictly local matters.
Okay.
And like I said, that's only, right now, it's been vetoed. Whether that is upheld, it, uh...
I still, I still ask, I'd still like to ask for more clarification on what that non-citizen status is. Is this somebody that's in the state or town, however you want to put it? That is, are they on a visa? Are they here, are they here legally?
I can't answer that. I don't know.
I think that's a really important question.
I think that would make a big difference.
I, I think it makes a very big difference. I, I think of, I think a while ago, didn't we, the state pass drivers licenses for workers that come into the state? So they're here on a visa. So, you know, so we've got some, some tracking and identification and purpose and, and yes, yeah. And I'm all in favor of immigration. But if somebody's here illegally, I personally have a problem with any perks of being a citizen of this country or state. I, I want them to become a citizen, and I want them to have their rights as citizens. But if they're not here legally, John, what if I decided to...
I'll be happy to find out definitively in answer to your questions.
Okay. Now, the rest of the board, how do you, how does this board feel about that issue? I'd like to know. Paul?
As far as what, like, just my personal opinion on, if you're here, if you're, well, he was talking about this stuff.
No, don't go on the very quick synopsis that I just gave you. I, I would recommend before you make a decision, you, I'll email the bill number to you for Winuski and Barry, or excuse me, Winuski and Montpelier. You can read exactly how it's worded.
Right. So, yeah, I'd like to see more, myself.
Okay, he wants to see more. Joey?
I think if you don't pay taxes, you shouldn't have a vote. You're paying taxes, you're here legally, vote, that's fine. Kelly?
If you're here legally and paying taxes at the town.
Okay.
I think, because I, I'm sorry.
Roll call. John, how did you vote on that as a bill?
I vote affirmative, and the reason is that it was voted overwhelmingly about the communities that were involved. Like 70% were in favor.
But, but with all due respect, sir, you represent this community, Weathersfield and Cavendish. And, and I would appreciate...
And you're offering one opinion, and there's other opposing opinions. And we just heard two.
Okay, then my next question would be, when do you intend to hold some sort of town hall to learn how the people of this town or Cavendish feel about some of these issues?
Well, with COVID over with, it becomes much, much easier. I haven't got anything scheduled right now. And to be honest with you, Mike, these, the focus, when you get to Montpelier, is in your committee. And neither one of these came to the education committee. We listed testimony. It wouldn't be the opportunity to, bill comes up, it's read the first time, that may be the first time you've even heard about it. You may have a week or two when it goes to committee, and then, then it comes back for a second reading. So it would be really fast to try to have a town hall on all of those issues. And to be honest with you, Mike, there haven't been, okay, here's one that I think is controversial in Weathersfield. It's a proposal to expand the bottle bill. It, it never made it to the Senate, it made it through the House. In a nutshell, everything that's in the region coolers, with the exception of dairy products, would be, have a nickel on them. All the wine would have a nickel on them. What, that would have a significant impact on Weathersfield, we're a border community, so it's going to increase the price of beverages here. But more importantly, we have one recycling center or redemption center that, and I spoke with him, and it's too small. He couldn't handle all these new products. If he closes, the convenience stores are required to accept them back. Okay? There are exceptions, you can apply for an exemption, so you don't have to. That would, that would affect five convenience stores. If there's not a redemption center within 10 miles of your community, the stores are required, and this isn't widely known even by the people that run the stores, are required to take them back.
I, I think even at the town level, we have decisions that we make that, that this board or the town manager needs to make. And the people expect us to lead and, and, and take charge and, and make decisions that are in the best interest of the town, the residents. I think sometimes those decisions, we're going to have one tonight, I talked to Brandon about, I'll get to you in a minute, Paul. That, I, I talked to Brandon earlier, it's, it's about having summertime entertainment. I personally wouldn't be, at this time, comfortable voting to authorize that because I, I don't know anything about the people in the area and how they're going to be affected. I don't want to put on them a decision that upsets their life that way. And, and I think with some things, certainly constitutional issues, and you explained that very well, thank you, that, that there's, there's a process for that that's pretty lengthy, that it has to go through. It's not just a quick decision that's made by people that are sitting in the chairs up in Montpelier. So I, that's, that's educational for me, and I appreciate that. But I've always felt that we don't really get a chance to, to hear and talk with the people that represent us in Montpelier that well. And having you there, it, it's a good feeling to, to know somebody there. And hopefully, we can have conversations about some of the stuff that's going on. And I, I get it. Sometimes, it happens here too. You've done it for a long time. I get it. You, you get it. So I want to thank you for your time, there and here. I appreciate you. And Paul, you have a question?
I'm good, thank you.
Anybody ever, any questions for John?
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Keep pulling force.
And you know, Michael, how hard it is in this, in this community to get information out.
Or get it in, or to get it in, to so you know what they want.
Well, the planning commission's a good example, how hard it is to get any people involved.
Yes.
Gary Richardson, I got to give the man a lot of credit, rest in peace. He used to sit down in his store on a Saturday morning and chat with people. Does that give you a litmus test of the whole community? I don't think so. But nonetheless, it would be at least some input.
Yep.
As opposed to no input.
Olivia, you had thrown your finger up real quick for a minute. Did you have something?
I texted Rosalie and made sure everyone could hear us. It was fine. No big deal.
Okay. Could you do me a favor? Somewhere in my entry to the building, I lost my pen. I have to have something to take notes with. Could you round me up a pen, please?
I will.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. So that wraps, are there, there's some people online. I see Rosalie, Nancy, Nancy Francum, Nicole, and Brandon, but he's right here. So are there any, anybody that's online that has any comments for the select board at this time? I give it just a minute, because sometimes people have to get unmuted and things get... Thank you. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of meeting 5:17:21?
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Everything's good? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And next, we have the credit card policy. Do you want a motion on the floor for the credit card policy now, or do you want to wait until? I prefer to have the motions and then the discussions.
Yep, that sounds good.
So what would the motion look like? Is there any kind of template for that here?
It would be a motion, well, Steve, how would you word this motion?
This would be for the first reading.
Yep.
I think the motion would be something to the effect to accept the first reading of the credit card policy.
Okay, do I hear that motion? Paul made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, and let's have some discussion on the credit card policy.
So Steve and I have met with both fire departments. And basically, what we were doing was reviewing how this new contract would affect both fire departments. And one of the items that we came across was credit cards. Each department has credit cards that they use as a nonprofit. They each have credit cards for gas and so forth. And what we're looking to do is just issue one credit card for both departments. Steve, you can, you can build off of that if you have any, anything else that you want to add.
Well, your current policy allows you to find enough three credit cards. And it specifies the highway supervisor, library director, and town manager. So we're bringing the fire departments on board. We're going to be paying all of their bills as of July 1. And so both departments have a need for on-spot purchases. They're out of the fire, they need to get water, they need to get food, they need, they have a need for a certain amount of on-spot purchases. And similar to what the other three folks have. So the, the concept here is to expand that from three cards to five cards. So that the chief of each of the departments has a credit card, a town credit card as well. And either the chief or their designated representative will then use the card in those limited situations when it's necessary. And the normal process would be for them to go through the town, you know, to, to have something ordered and bill it to the town and will pay it. But there are those emergency situations where they need a card. So it would essentially, it would, the major thing is it would expand the number of cards from three to five. There's also some work done under documentation to kind of tighten that up. I think that's the one area that is the most difficult slash dangerous with credit card purchases is people submitting the appropriate documentation for what they purchased. And since the people who get the cards, I believe, have to actually sign a copy of the policy saying they've read and understood it, it makes sense to make sure that the documentation section is as specific and accurate as it can be. So we've kind of upped the ante a little bit and, and changed that so that it spells out the fact that they need receipts, and those receipts need to be specific and itemized.
So one of the issues we're, we're having, Mike, and Steve explained it to me very well, is if you go into a store and they don't, they don't explain, it doesn't detail out what the, what the purchase was for. So we'll just say, "One charge for $26.94," but it doesn't itemize everything.
Correct.
And after discussing this with Steve, I, I agree as well that we need a receipt that details. And Steve used the, the example with alcohol. Can you give that example?
Well, I mean, that's, that's one of the big no-no's, right? We don't pay for alcohol or tobacco or... So if you just get a, a receipt that says you spent $26.40, you have no idea what you bought. And so there are places that will just do that, and that's not acceptable. You also can go to some places and the receipt says, "Food, food, food, beverage, beverage, beverage." That's not acceptable as well. The receipt needs to be specific enough so that we can identify the individual item that was purchased.
Paul?
Two things. That, that, that's, that's good. I have the same type of policy where I, where I'm, when I use, I have a purchasing card and a travel card. So those are two separate things. Is this, can you, can the fire departments purchase gas with this? Or is there, is it strictly only for certain things, or is this an open credit card for whatever they want, big sides?
It is, it's, it is an open credit card for whatever, well, in the sense that you can go to a vendor, pretty much any vendor, and give them the card and they'll accept it, yes. It is not open in the sense that I can go down, you know, I can take my wife out to dinner and charge the dinner to the card. You know, it has to be legitimate town purchases.
Absolutely.
And there's a process in place, you know, West Weathersfield gets their gas from the highway.
Diesel fuel, no gas.
Or diesel fuel. So they're not going to, unless there's some kind of weird emergency, they're not going to use the credit card for diesel fuel. At Scotty, we have a separate account. At Scotty, so unless there's an emergency, they're not going to use it for...
Right. So there, so Scotty has a separate credit card for gas?
They have.
Or for diesel?
Essentially, yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I didn't see a lot of restrictions of what, you know, or even, not that you're, not that the credit card company's going to actually stop you from going out to dinner with your wife, but, you know, it, it makes sense to say, hey, you know, these are the things you should use it for, but I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear that it could be, I mean, you can get gas, you can get, like you said, beverages, you can do whatever, you've just got to bring that receipt in, and then you're going to get penalized after whether it was right or wrong. And then I can see what's going to happen and say, well, it doesn't say in the policy, I couldn't use it for that. So, you know, I might want it a little clearer on either vendors or listing or things of that nature. What is, what's the card intended for, you know? Like I said, my company actually, you know, we don't just have one credit card. I've got a purchasing card, then I've got a separate one for travel and, like, educational expenses. Like, if you're going to do a seminar online or something, you'd use it for, for that and so on, so that's all. It's fine if it's, if it's vague, just everybody's aware that that's there. And it could get used for gas in an emergency or whatever, which I think gas is an important thing. Because I know some people have had issues with that before, so I want to make sure that no department is ever having to pay for gas on their own personal accounts.
In, in regards to the documentation, I, I think there needs, personally, and the rest of the board can chime in on what my personal feelings are, documentation, lack thereof, is just not going to be accepted, period. Needs to be stated in here. Written, you know, you know, coming in with a credit card receipt that says $26 on it and, and somebody's written on it that I bought, you know, whatever, you know, for the town, pizza, you know, water and a pair of gloves. No, it, it, it's got to be a, some sort of legal transaction, you know, official document that says, you know, "From the store or the vendor, this is what you bought." I don't want to see it written and somebody's signature on it. That's, we're not going to, I, I wouldn't accept that either. There is disciplinary action called out in here, but I'm, I'm really trying to focus on, I'm, I'm, I'm a little less concerned with issuing a, I, I see your hand, Paul.
Oh, all right, sorry. Thank you.
Of, of saying, "This is what you can buy." I'd, I'd rather put, just put those things in place and say, "Look, you know, we're trusting you to handle this correctly. Don't come in here with stuff that doesn't make sense and ask us to pay for it. And if you don't have proof of it, we're not going to pay it." And just kind of, does that make...
It's already paid.
We're already, we're, we're going to pay it, because it's on our account. It's on our bill, and unless there's something that we can go through the credit card company with, because it's a, cards we're going to have removed, but it's on our card, we're going to pay it. It's what we're going to expect. It's whether we're going to discipline the employee, are we going to terminate the employee, are we going to make the employee pay? I mean, I've had a couple of, not here, but my other job, I've had a circumstance where somebody is like, and they're more apologetic than probably beating themselves up more than I could. But it's like, "I pulled the wrong credit card out of my pocket, I used it for, for this thing. Here's the check, I'm going to pay back, I'm so sorry." You know, but that happens very rarely. But, and in terms of, if you start to specify that you can't use it for gas, or you can't use it for X, Y, and Z, there are always circumstances where, because of the nature of the circumstance, you should have used it for gas at that particular point because of what was happening. So it's, it's sometimes difficult to limit it to certain categories of expenses. I think that the big thing you limit it to is necessary expenses for the, for town business. And beyond that, the, we, if a vendor cannot give you a machine receipt that is itemized, but the vendor will itemize three pepperoni pizzas, two liters of soda, you know, and sign off on it, then I think we should accept that. For the employee to say, "Oh, here's the receipt, and I'm going to give you the list of the things I bought," is not acceptable. But if they can get that from the vendor, fine.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. I, I agree with you. Paul?
I just, what do we have in place for a lost or damaged receipt? Where I, where I work, we have a form that can be filled out. Obviously, you can't use that every single time. But, you know, it takes a manager's signature and so on. Obviously, you can't use that every single time, but, um, you know, takes a manager, uh, signature and so on and so forth and you have to, then you do have to put in your detail in it. But, um, you know, especially if we're letting firefighters or something, you know, they could be at the middle of a fire, gotta do something, I don't know, and that's damaged or lost. So do we have anything in place for that?
I think, and we've, we've had those circumstances happen. I think it's a matter of degree. I think you have to be understanding in those circumstances. So the first time, the second time it happens, the fifteenth time in two months that it's happened, something's wrong and you gotta, well, less than fifteen times. But if it happens occasionally, you deal with it and you move on. If it becomes a habit, then you start to look at, um, what you need to do.
Well, no, I, I, I think it's good to have that. I just wanted to, I didn't see anything in here that said lost or damaged. I just don't wanna get into a point where, like Mike said, you gotta have, or one receipt, otherwise something's gonna be happening. I mean, stuff does happen, so I just didn't know if there was a, a clause here for lost or damaged receipts.
Joey?
Is the purpose of having these extra credit cards just simply to make sure that these guys aren't taking money out of their own pockets when they need to?
That's one of the reasons.
So I guess I'm just confused as to, we trust these guys to spend a lot more money than two thousand dollars on a credit card and we're gonna talk here for thirty minutes about what counts and whether or not we're gonna pay for a pizza. I think we just gotta trust our guys and if something starts to look fishy-
Then we investigate it at that point.
Investigate it at that point. We gotta trust our people.
I don't think this is about not trusting your people.
Well, it kinda is. Well, what can I buy, what can I buy, how are we gonna determine this? If you go to Pizza Chef and buy four pepperoni pizzas, it's gonna come out to forty-six dollars and change and that's what the receipt's gonna say. It's not gonna say four pepperoni pizzas on, it's not going to.
Well, I, I see it, it's trust and verify. We trust the people are going to do the right thing and we just need to verify that the right thing has been done. And when we get into the annual audit, auditors are gonna look for these kinds of things. And if they find that we're accepting receipts that just have twenty-six dollars on them, then they're gonna begin to write us up that we, that our processes are inadequate. We can't verify that-
I mean, if you're gonna need to count money appropriately. From that analogy, Joey, then why don't we have a personnel policy? We trust our employees, don't we?
We gotta town manager, trust him to manage our employees.
See what I'm saying? You mean, you could, I mean, how deep are you gonna take that?
Worth more than two thousand dollars, that's all.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so this is the first reading. Brandon, you got any more on this that you need to go through at this point?
Uh, just, just one thing to touch on, one of the comments, um, about taking your wife out to dinner on the town credit card. Um, I don't think that would happen, um, but it says right at the top, purpose, credit cards provide a convenient method of obtaining goods and services for the town. Um, so I think that solves some of the issue right there.
That has not, I mean, I, I have not run into a circumstance where somebody here has inadvertently used the card for a personal expense. That would be rare.
Mm-hmm.
So there's a, there's a second piece to this. Are you done with your discussion on?
Uh, yes, go-
The second piece to this, the fire departments are coming online July one. Unfortunately, the timeline and it got delayed, it was just like a week and a half ago that we finalized our meetings with the fire departments and kind of came to the conclusion that they needed to have these cards if you folks are, are willing to let them have them. So you need to read this policy three times. So it's gonna be into July before you have an official policy, if you accept it, that includes credit cards for the fire departments. So they're gonna have, it's gonna be August before we can issue them credit cards. It would be nice if they could have credit cards as of July one. So if you're comfortable and if you think that you're going to eventually adopt a new policy that allows the fire departments to have these credit cards, would you consider authorizing us to proceed to, um, to proceed to take the steps to actually acquire the cards?
Um, Kelly?
I don't have a problem with it.
Joey?
No, I'm fine with that.
I'm perfectly fine, they should have them.
They should.
Um, okay. There's a three member consensus at least that says, go ahead.
And, and the readings will be like a, from-
Well, I, i- is, is, is that some sort of statutory requirement or, or the three readings? I mean, we could, I, I'd like to see final language, not draft language, to, to vote on like we do with the planning commission. Uh, but I, I suppose I'd be fine with the next meeting, uh, if we have a final draft of, of the language.
I, I believe, I, I can't tell you whether it's written in law, but, um, what I'm familiar with is, is a process of multiple readings for policies are adopted.
We can stay with that if everybody's comfortable with it.
But the consensus here was enough to let Steve go ahead, I think, and start getting the credit cards for the two fire departments.
Mm-hmm.
Do you need an actual vote or is a consensus good enough, Steve?
Well, we're not voting on approving the policy at this time. We're just, uh, you know, um, yeah, but do we need to authorize and give him the authorization to go ahead and get the cards? Is that what you're asking for?
I think the board could at least take a vote to accept the addition of both fire chiefs into the policy.
Then I'll, I'll make a motion to accept both fire departments into the credit card policy.
One second.
Uh, any further discussion on the motion? There's a motion on the floor to accept the two fire departments into the credit card policy and, and issue them credit cards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Um, so, that, that enough, Steve?
Yep.
Okay. Next on the agenda, uh, town manager report. You have ten minutes.
I'm actually, so we have a couple of folks on Zoom tonight that want to give a quick presentation. So if we could take the agenda out of order and take up item number six and I'll do my town manager report afterwards.
O- okay.
Is that okay?
And, and any problem with that?
I'm fine with that.
Everybody's good, okay? We'll jump to number six, uh, text my gov presentation. Who's up?
Uh, Nancy, can you hear us?
Yeah, loud and clear, can you hear me as well?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, so let me see, I saw I can, if you wanna allow me to start sharing my screen, um, I'll be able to start logging into that.
Are you logged in?
I believe so, yes.
Yes. Do you need me to come over there and check it out?
Yeah, I think so, Brandon.
Okay, we're, we're experiencing just a, a moment of, um, I won't call it technical difficulty, but just, um-
Difficulties?
The, uh, the experience or lack thereof that we all have with virtual meetings.
Okay, I just made you a host.
Okay.
See if that works out for you.
So I just started sharing my screen, can you see where this text line is on my end?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, perfect. So essentially what I've gone over with Brandon, um, is our citizen communication tool. Um, it really has three main functions, which is to make it easier for citizens to report issues, what about, you know, pothole, code of compliance for animals, um, find information as well as being able to receive alerts. Um, and that can also be used for things like, you know, reminders about meetings or, you know, reminders to let people know, hey, don't park on the street because snowpods are coming through. It can be used for, you know, water may breaks, alerts, uh, road closures, that kind of thing. Uh, but just for the sake of time, um, something that I did want to just start out with is essentially just showing you how it's able to help answer questions. Um, so what we do is we do provide a local phone number that would be assigned to your city or town and citizens would be able to text that number anytime and be able to receive information depending on what they're texting it about. Um, so I did, I went ahead and made an example based for your city, um, just prior to our meeting here. Um, and that was for the word finance. So on your cell phones there, if you'd like to go and, go ahead and see how that works, um, go ahead and text finance to that number up there on the screen. Um, and I'll just go ahead and give you a couple of minutes to get that in there for whoever would like to communicate. Okay, did we get a couple of responses quite yet?
Yeah, I got one.
Took care of it at what page?
Yep.
Okay. Um, oh, can you still see my screen?
Yes. Yes, we can, Nancy.
Okay, I'm just looking at, um, the screen on your side. I'm not sure why my screen changed there, but, okay. Um, so let me close this out here, um, and then I'll go ahead and hit refresh on this. So when you received a response for that, you should have also been able to click on that link. Um, that is a link that I just created that is tied to your city website. Um, so while we're on this main dashboard, just want to mention that the program is also fully FOIA compliant. So if anyone ever did need to pull this information for a public record or something like that, um, they can really do so just by, um, hitting export on this. Um, this, of course, is only accessible by your different staff members. But, um, going into the backend of this, um, you know, as you received that response for the word finance, um, obviously that was tailored to your community as far as what kind of response you want them to receive for that. So just by different examples, you can see if somebody had texted in about agenda or, you know, community relations, maybe it's how can I receive, um, you know, building permit or just those different types of things. It's gonna pick up on those words and then you can go ahead and create a response, um, for anything in there. So in this case, I have made a response for the word finance, where when somebody texts word finance, it will give them to, it'll give them a link with, um, to take them directly to your finance page on your website as well as the phone number if they have additional questions. Um, it's also very easy to do that, you can simply hit add new, put in what you want that keyword to be as well as what response is tied to it. And when you hit add it, then it becomes a part of, of your program here. Um, for those of you that did participate texting in the word finance, um, does that make sense as far as how we're able to get the information back to the citizen?
I, I didn't, I didn't actually do it, but I'm following and I'm keeping up with you. And my first question is, can I just do that on the website without the third-party middle person? I mean, didn't we just spend a lot of money on-
Sorry, what was that?
Well, I'm actually talking to the town manager.
Okay.
Uh, uh, didn't we just spend a lot of money on updating and upgrading our, our, our website, our town website?
We-
And can't you just click on finance right now on that website?
So that's one thing that this does, but it also, everybody's cell phone number that we have in this log, we're able to push out information to them. So if there's something and we have, I don't know, five hundred cell phone numbers and we wanna get an alert out to somebody and not rely on them going to our website that day, it would push that alert out.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Plus, I also think you can tailor this more for the information instead of having just an open webpage that you've gotta search around for. You could have, just like she was showing, tailored information distributed and sent based on the keywords that are, that are typed in. So, I mean, it's just a different way of communicating and, and I think the, the main benefit would be able to push things back out to people directly at a, at a time that's needed.
We get a lot of things that come to us in our emails, advertisements and so forth. And one of the things that the select board requested is better communication to the public. Um, I, I set up a time with Nancy just to chat about this and she gave her a presentation and I thought it deserved at least a little bit more attention at the select board level to see if it would work for the town. Whether it does or not is up to you.
Okay. Uh, Nancy, oh, I'm sorry, Joey?
Is this something that, like, the screen that we're on here, we, or somebody in the town hall goes through and fills out all those things?
Yes.
For each and, okay.
So say, for example, um-
Yeah, could you?
Okay, go, go ahead, Nancy.
Nancy?
Oh, sorry, I was just saying that we do have a project manager that will help, um, create those different keywords and everything as far as your setup. But we do also have unlimited users training and support as well. So you can also create new keywords at any time. Um, you know, for example, two years ago, nobody knew what COVID was. Um, but in this last year, especially with a lot of offices being closed, that was a question that came up a lot. And so cities were able to just simply hit add new, create that new word and obviously you have different changes, different events, different things like that. You can always want to make those as well. Um, any of those can also be customized depending on the information. Um, something worth mentioning as well is that aside from just including links, you can also include PDFs, forms, calendars, flyers. Um, so with a lot of things, for example, if it was an agenda, um, somebody could text an agenda and aside from having that Zoom link included, you could also include that agenda that they could just click on. And that, of course, is just for the automation side of things. Um, so it sounds like the ability to send out notifications does seem to be where the higher value is. Um, so I'll just talk about that next briefly here. Um, so the, the way that this works is citizens can opt in to receive these alerts simply by texting in a keyword to a short code number that we provide. Um, so in an example of that, if someone were texting city one to that short code number, it would add them to this group here to receive, um, city alerts. But anytime that the city does have a message they'd like to get out to the public, um, making it difficult to hear it says send message, you'll see that my group is for city alerts. I'll put in my message here and then once I hit send, it will automatically send a text to every citizen that's opted in. Um, and I'm sure that you've noticed that we do have different groups here in place. Um, and the reason for that is because we also understand that there does seem to be a bit of a difference as far as, you know, where most people would want to know about emergencies. There also seems to be a bit of a difference as far as who might want to know about events or just things going on on Main Street. Typically, it shows the parents, owner of the updates at the high school. So you can have as many different types of groups as you want. So if you ever did want to just reach out to a specific demographic or maybe just a specific area in your town, you could also have a group for this as well, if you ever wanted to.
So like severe-
I have questions as far as how we're able to do that.
Yeah, yeah, who, who actually has access to creating the groups?
Uh, so you actually would, we give you the admin rights to do that.
Okay.
So if we have a severe weather alert or we need to get some information out to a mass group of people fast, direct, it, we could, we would be able to send that message directly to everybody's cell phone.
I, 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 oh, go ahead, Joey.
Correct.
I just have a question of how we're gonna actually reach new people and gather the new numbers versus the people that are already kind of in the know and what's going on. Just, we need to make sure that this grows enough so it's actually effective because otherwise it's just more busy work for Olivia, probably.
I completely agree with you. I mean, we would have to accumulate everyone's cell phones number, everyone's cell phone numbers in the town and add them to those alerts for it to be productive.
Like, do you send something out with a property tax bill saying if you'd like to opt in, leave your cell phone number here?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yes, so you do have the option to not add a bunch of numbers. Um, but one of the ways that we've seen more of our agencies use this is where they simply will send out an advertisement letting people know that if they would like to receive alerts, to just text that number and that way you also don't have to do that manually. Um, but if you do also have a list of numbers, we can also do that as well if you wanted to do it that way. So we wanted to give you the option to decide on how you want to get those phone numbers in there.
Something to think about.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it, it looks like it's a two-year, what's quoted here is a two-year contract for $3,800 for the first year. And then the second year is $3,800 also?
Uh, no, so the first year is going to be $3,800 just because of that setup fee. Uh, but then moving forward, it would just stay at the $3,000.
Right, so we'd be signing up for basically $6,800 for two years' worth of this.
Um, does the board have any interest in moving on this now or you wanna take some time, do a little more research on this?
I don't wanna move on it right now.
I, I was gonna say, it sounds like crickets, so maybe we need to take a little bit of time and review this and, and bring it back again. Um,
I don't wanna lose it, but I don't necessarily wanna move on it right now.
Okay. I, I, I tend to agree as well.
But I appreciate the presentation. I, I think this is- This is good.
Is, is there, I, I think you were, we were just talking about it. But i- is there a way for, for you, um, to send out a notification? I don't know how, I guess I don't know how you do that. Um, I, I guess you just clarified it. You, uh, we'd have to have something where we give a, a code word everybody in town and then they would have to take the responsibility and respond to that code word and then they could put their, enter their phone number and be in the system. So we don't, she needs work, I know she does, but that's okay. But, but, you know, we don't, we don't wanna put a burden on anybody in the town office in getting this thing up and going.
Yep.
Or even after the fact.
One last quick question from me anyways. Is there any other towns locally around here that, that presently use this?
That's a good question.
Um, one that I do know that, um, we usually find out over in Vermont was, uh, Manchester.
Much larger, but yeah.
They're one of the first ones that come to mind. Um, we do have over, I would say that especially in the East Coast, we do have about 200 cities and counties that are using this program. Um, Vermont is obviously a smaller state. Um, so we do have more in like Florida and Maine and those kinds of things too, but we definitely do have some practices that we could send over to you. Um, and then as far as like the sign up and everything, I just wanted to show you this example. So this is the city of Thatcher where they were using this new, um, one of our new widgets here. But you can see on here where it has a little pop-up that says, um, if you'd like to receive messages from the town, you can just opt-in by texting Thatcher to 91896. And so that's how their citizens have been able to sign up to receive those alerts. And when I text that to that number, um, they'll essentially receive a response that says something on my Google. Um, if you'd like to receive alerts from the city, text yes to opt-out, text stop, something like that.
I got a question.
And something that I do think, oh, go ahead.
Um, text my gov. Is that an app for the phone? It, it-
Uh, no, that is just the name of our program.
Okay.
So they don't have to have an app or anything. They can simply just text that number. So even if people only have flip phones, they can still have access to, uh, receiving that same information.
Okay, good, good call.
Thank you. And I apologize for interrupting you, the delay between us. Go ahead.
Oh, no, you're fine. Um, I just wanted to mention as well is that, um, if the two-year is a concern as far as if you did want to just try it for the first year to see how that goes, um, we could look at reducing that to just a one-year term instead of a two.
Okay. We'll keep that in our considerations. Thank you. Is there anything else?
Um, we do also have the reporting capabilities, but, um, if you did just want to, um, review that at another time, make sure that you're saying it's like some more time, we can also do that as well.
Uh, 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 just a brief descriptive reporting capabilities, what does that mean?
Sure. So there's obviously going to be a difference between when somebody just has a question versus when they have a confirm. Um, and so that kind of brings us into that reporting site here. So if somebody is reporting a problem, whether they text report, code complaint, animal control or something like that, um, you'll also see that the program will instead ask questions such as, you know, what's the nearest address, a description of the issue, what's their name? And when citizens respond to those questions, once they have gone through that, the program will then automatically consent send it to an email and then send it off to whichever district or department that typically take care of, um, that type of report. So whether it's for the fire department, you know, public work, code complaints, um, you'd be able to get all of those to that department with the same information from that report.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you very much and we'll take this under consideration and-
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll, um, I did stop sharing, so it should be back to Brandon as the host.
Yep, it is.
All right, thanks Nancy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um-
Um, oopsies.
I'm sorry.
Hold on.
Oh, when she ended, she decided the meeting.
Back to town manager's report. Uh, we gotta wait for people to come on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kicked everyone off.
Do you wanna do the summer music event next? I, I assume those folks are here for the summer.
Yes.
Yeah, I was wondering about that too.
Brandon is stuck here for the duration.
Okay. If the board is-
I'm fine, I, I just-
Okay with that, we'll, we'll go ahead and do that. We'll move to number seven next. Wait until we get back up online here. Are, are, are we?
We are, but there's some people that probably haven't caught on that they've been kicked off.
Too bad we couldn't send them an alert.
Here, throw this at them.
I know not everybody's online, but we can get alerts here with the webpage, like when things change, which is strictly webpage changing. You can't structure that as much, but.
It looks like we're getting back to where we were. Right, Nancy's the only one missing now.
Yep.
Right, Sapp.
Yep. Okay, we're all set.
We're all set now?
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, we took a pause for a moment as, um, our last, uh, uh, speaker or guest, um, signed out. We lost everybody. Everybody appears to be back and we will resume the meeting. Um, the board, uh, is going to move to item number seven, uh, summer music event discussion. And Brandon, who will we have speaking to us tonight?
Oh, wait, oops.
Uh, we have Mr. and Mrs. Brink. Um, they contacted me and they were looking for a place in town to, to hold a series of summer music events. The original location that we were thinking, that they proposed was the Center Church. Um, but after further discussion, um, we did a site visit at Hoyzington Field and we determined that might be a good location to hold, um, some kind of an event, some kind of a, a music event. Um, so they came into my office and we talked in great detail about this and we thought it'd be a good idea, um, to get people back out. Um, and Mr. Brink here plays the guitar and, um-
Well, I've also run, uh, the Stoughton Pond series in the past. You know, the difference between Stoughton Pond and Hoyzington is that with, to get a vendor over at Stoughton Pond, you need like a year's worth of per, you know, permits just to get an ice cream vendor. Um, with Hoyzington Field, you can run a barbecue, you know, have the volunteer fire department come in and do hot dogs and hamburgers or a food truck.
That's another idea.
Yeah, which is another idea.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you guys take it from here. So if you wanna give the board your proposal and-
Well, I, I'm looking at this as a small event, not a big huge band, it's more of a singer-songwriter event. Um, my husband's a singer-songwriter. He lost a lot of gigs last year. Um, a lot of our friends lost a lot of, um, gigs also. So we were looking for somewhere for everybody to get out and share the music with everybody else. Um, so we, like Brandon said, we met with him and thought, you know, why not Weathersfield? Uh, Bill owns a house in Parkinsville, so we, we pass by Hoyzington and, uh, the church quite often. Um, so we, you know, approached that, but our idea was to get something maybe weekly, um, possibly every other week, uh, just bringing in, uh, either a solo or duo singer-songwriter to sit up in the pavilion they have out there. Um, it'd be free, family-friendly. Um, also would have the opportunity to have vendors. Maybe the, um, you know, one of the fire departments could come and set up a barbecue and use it as a fundraiser um, to provide, you know, something for people to eat. We're thinking of evenings, you know, six to eight PM possibly, um, on a Friday evening. Um, which would be great because people starting the weekend, get home, they don't wanna cook. They can go there and grab, you know, hot dogs and hamburgers from the fire department and support them as well as come for free, you know, free to come sit up in the nice lawn you have out there and enjoy some music. We would provide everything as far as, um, equipment. Um, I would organize and, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, Nicole's raising her hand.
Oh, okay. Uh, would you, uh, Nicole, would you please wait while we fit, allow the presentation to finish and then I'll come to you? Go ahead.
Uh, uh, I forgot where I was. Uh, so it would be, um, where was I?
He would provide the equipment.
Thank you. I was thinking, he must be the note taker. Um, we would provide all the equipment. Uh, we have a whole full setup of, um, um, you know, the speaker system and everything, so, um, we would do that. I would do everything else. I would do the promoting, finding sponsors to, we wanna pay these musicians. So we would take on the responsibility of finding financial backing. Um, I will do all the promoting and, um, all the social media, uh, printing for everything. Uh, basically all you guys would have to do is give us the okay. We would do everything else. Um, our first step was to come here to get the okay, um, hopefully. And the next step would be trying to find financial backing, which I have, you know, it's, it's, I, I didn't write a, an estimated budget for a weekly series and I think it was roughly $7,000, which is really undercutting a lot of what we would be doing. Um, so it'd be really, um, not as expensive as some other events. I know Springfield has one coming up, which is, um, uh, more than double what we are doing and that's only for a three-day event.
Yeah, three days, $10,000.
So we're, you know, trying to make it very reasonable and have a fun time and get people out. People are gonna wanna come out. And what they're to do, use a big field, people can be comfortable, give the fire department or whoever, maybe boy scouts or whoever can do some food vending, um, make some money, do it as a fundraiser, um, you know, so. Uh, we did, I did write out a little more in detail on my little proposal, um, I think you thought, but basically it's getting people out and having some fun. Um, it wouldn't be very loud. It's only singer-songwriter. Like I said, there's no bands, no drums, just be guitar and singer.
That's it, I'm out. All right, how about a gen bet? We'll compromise.
I mean, we have a, we have a-
A washboard?
We have a, I, we have a list of potential people. Um, one, I would like to see Ben Fuller come in. I talked to him a few years ago. Um, and he was going to do something for us a few years ago, but schedules didn't work out. He's like, he's got a great following. Um, he'd bring a lot of people in and he's from the area. Um, and there's a couple other, you know, like the Melkowsketers, I don't know if you're familiar with them. Um, they're, they're on board with this. We have a lot of people, yes, we want to do it, let us know. So-
We just ran a concert yesterday at the Meeting House in, uh, Springfield.
The Unitarian.
Yeah, for, uh, Rick Valeri who, you know, came down, you know, from Burlington. We had people coming up from, uh, Cape Cod.
Cape Cod to see him.
To see him.
We've been doing this for a while, um, little smaller things, um, but we wanted to get it here and get it at a bigger scale.
Okay, so I'm a musician and I lost a lot of work last year as well.
You understand?
Uh, I do. Um, and you heard my comment earlier about, I, I would, I, I don't think you're probably gonna run into an issue, but I would certainly wanna know what some of the neighbors in the area think and feel about a six to eight PM concert with some sort of event going on on a weekly basis, because it's their lives that are affected. And then my next question, or my first question actually, um, does, does the school use that Hoyzington Field at all for any of its, uh, athletic events? Or, or are there any other organizations that have already, um, reserved that field for anything that would? You, you're gonna need to know that, so-
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, yeah.
If I've already got a Friday night plugged in, Steve?
I think the trustees of public funds have coordinated the, um, use of that field. And BJ Estey has been the person who has done that in the past. I don't think we've opened it up, uh, because of COVID. You know, there's a pavilion there and if you were, wanted to use the pavilion, you're supposed to call BJ and, and it is scheduled, so there's no conflict. But I think that, um, that has been sort of suspended during COVID. So if there's anybody who would know what, if anything is going on there, it would be BJ.
Okay. That would be contact, uh, you've come here first, but she would be next.
Yeah, there's a couple of strings that would, that need to be tugged on.
And it doesn't have to be a Friday evening. We, we just chose Friday evening. It could be a Sunday evening. It doesn't even have to be that late. We can even do it earlier. I'm just thinking about the musicians and their schedules. Um, and, and also summer, when it's a year warm, you know, six to eight would be a nice, you know, evening. You know, but I do agree and I did mention that to Bill that, you know, we have to take into consideration the neighbors.
Yeah.
Nicole.
Nicole had her hand up first.
She did, yes, she did.
Nicole, you're on.
Hi, I, I was just gonna say that there's a little bit of, um, audio/video problems on this end. So I was just, that was off, but now I have audio. I didn't have audio or video after the presentation, so that's all. I now have audio.
Okay, so you're all set now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Paul?
Uh, I just wanted to say that I, I like the idea and I'm all for this. I just wanted to look at the logistics, uh, farther into this and especially in your letter too, you asked, do we need insurance? Um, do we need, you know, security, so on and so forth? So those are the things that I'd wanna look into mainly. I, I, I love the idea. I think it's great. I, um, yes, need to talk with the neighbors obviously just to see what, anywhere for that matter.
I like the idea too, but they need a drummer.
Well, yeah.
I got a washboard. I'll give you-
But the, I mean, the thing is you're gonna need sanitary, so whether, you know, porta-potties or something.
Well, we spoke, um, Brandon about that.
What's that?
We, we already spoke to Brandon about that.
We're all set up on the-
Yeah, there's always been actually a porta-potty at Hoyzington Field. It was, um, paid for by, it was, you know, put in there by parking rep. It was like one of their budget things.
Some, some of the other questions would be, um, vendors coming in, licensing, what, you know, what, you know, I don't know if people, I mean, just 'cause you have a vendor shack and you, in a trailer or whatever, where do you get to go and do that? And I don't know the, I, I don't know if there's any-
That's why I wear beer.
Right, that's, yeah, that's why I wear that.
Joey, vendors are supposed to carry their own licenses for food. So if you roll a food truck in, the state could come in and check your license no matter what.
Right.
Okay. And, and do, do we have, uh, and John, I'll turn to you on this. I know you, you were around a long time, so do we have somewhere a policy where we would require, uh, uh, some sort of permit for a, a vendor situation like that? Or only up to like at, at over 150 people in our large gathering permit?
Large gathering is the only thing that might kick in.
Yep.
And I will say that if I can, that Brandon called me-
And I will say that if I can, that Brandon called me early in this process when the branch got a hold of him about the use of the Meeting House.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the Grove, and this is the presentation, but I will say that I can't speak for the, for the, um, U C C. church, the Congress that owns the building, but I can speak to the friends of the Meeting House, that our, part of our mission statement is to not only keep the building up, but to encourage use. So I, I'd still like to see consideration to use the, and I can say at least one of the neighbors would not object.
Well, the best way to keep neighbors from complaining is to invite them.
That's right.
The U C C. would be, if it's inclement weather, you'd have to use the indoor building.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I, and I think it doesn't mean that you couldn't use multiple venues.
Yes.
Yeah, actually, that, yeah.
You know, it doesn't always have to be in one place.
It's concerning with the church about the grounds, something about the grounds and, and.
Yeah, the roots.
That they didn't want people trampling over it.
Yes.
So I like it because it's under the trees, people can sit out on the lawn, but it's, you know, that's, I believe you guys have.
What traffic is not an issue, driving a food truck out in under the trees would be.
Well, the food trucks, I would think if there could go, it could be in the parking lot across the street. Um, I'm not on the lawn, but in the parking lot and then people would.
I, I wouldn't envision.
It's a little bit tricky there because the town owns the Grove, the church owns the parking lot across the road, but, uh, there's never been an issue with, with, once again, I'm speaking a little bit out of turn, but traditionally, there's never been an issue with the combination.
Yeah, I know there's been band concerts there on the steps in the past.
Yep.
Um, you know, I, I, you know, that meeting room inside, absolutely a great place for a small concert.
Yeah, you got reader automatic. Um, you, you, I wouldn't envision, um, like six, seven, eight or nine vendors as being at any one event, anyway, one or two. Paul?
Uh, I just, I was just going to kind of follow up with what, what, what's the next step, do you think? I mean, we, we already, a couple of people on the board have kind of vocalized their opinion. I mean, I don't think we're going to have a vote tonight or anything based on the fact that we want some feedback, but what are we going to direct? Brandon or, or, um, anybody to, to go next, do you think?
Well, I, I think first thing needs to happen is you need to talk to B J.
Okay.
That, and the second thing is, uh, we kind of still need to keep an eye on the, um, uh, the COVID thing from the governor and, and where's, where's that at? What do we have to do? Of course, there are, you know, you can do out, outdoor events up to, I think, a hundred and fifty people, social distancing, masks, so, so it doesn't rule out doing it, but, but you have to have those things in place.
So I talked to B J. recently because somebody called to rent the venue there and she said it, right, right now during COVID, it was kind of like first come, first served, just like show up and do your little gathering, but, um, I don't know, how are we going to talk to the butters to like, see if they're unhappy with the idea? Like what, how do we, like, do we send out like a letter to them? To, to the butters to find out if the sound like is going to be a problem, like the noise?
Well, a- actually, it, it is.
My dove.
Well, it's one way to advertise a concert.
Um, hey, hold on just a second. Well, well, first of all, it's, it is town property, so it, it is a decision we could, we can make.
Okay.
And then from that, um, we need to, we need to be aware of what the neighbors are thinking and, and whether or not they're in agreement with it a, as it, as it, as it progresses. I live in that area, so I, I, I know many of them and I can reach out to some of them and try to get an idea. It's kind of like John said, it's tough to get input sometimes, uh, but if, you know, go knock on a couple of doors and find out what a few people, you know, what, what they think about the idea. And, uh, and the other way is to just go ahead and do it and see what happens.
Yeah.
You're not talking about, we're, we're, we have a policy, a noise policy, which, uh, kicks in at ten o'clock, ten P M. So it's, it, this isn't even going to come probably close to that noise policy.
Okay.
Um, we have the zoning ordinances in, in, um, um, and the noise ordinance that we have in place, which is almost non-enforceable. We've been through that conversation. Um, so, I mean, it really comes down to what, what you hear from the people in the area. I, I don't see folk singer acts, a guitar, I'm assuming a guitar or microphone, a small P A. system, um, you know, Ben Fuller thing might be a little.
Well, I'm going to talk to good Ben Fuller myself.
That might get a little out of hand there, but, 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 but that's a good thing.
Yeah.
You know, Ben's popular, he does a great job. Uh, I, I, I mean, I support the arts, obviously, I'm, I'm, I mean, I can't paint, but anyway, um, so I, Paul's question is, what else do we need for information? Um, I would still tou- touch base with B J.
Okay.
Um, uh, look into any, any permitting or any, any type of things that need to be in place, whether it's COVID or licensing, you know, on your vendors and stuff like that. Talk to the fire departments, uh, talk to the police department, uh, find out, you know, you know, where they're at with it. Um, I, I don't see him, this as being a big crazy thing. Ludlow does it right in the middle of town at the, at the little pavilion they've got. Um, I mean, it happens all over the place and it's a great idea. Um, just don't want to step on any toes getting there.
Exactly. I mean, you know, one, one thing I could do is just drag my equipment out there and say, okay, what do you think?
Call me, I'll bring mine if we can get away with that.
All right, yeah, if we can get away with drums and guitar.
Joey? So something else that would be helpful is, once you talk to B J. and lock down the dates that you would want, I would think then you could probably start reaching out to some musicians that you have listed here and kind of get a schedule together, see if they're willing to work for what you're willing to pay and, you know, that kind of thing. And then once we have a solid, yes, I have these people agreed to these dates and everything's cleared, then.
Yeah.
That, that would be helpful for me.
Another thing I'll throw out, coming from this, this world, is you can keep it free, but you could put up a sign that says five dollar donation. If somebody doesn't want to pay, that, that we can't pay, come on in.
Well, that's why I run the coffee house series over at, uh, the, at the U U.
Sure, so, I mean, there's ways to deal with that.
You know, five, you know, five dollars suggested donation, but I'd rather give them, you know, like, okay, this is how much you're getting paid to work.
Well, they should know that, yeah, I, they need to know that coming in, but how you get there is, you know, there's things you can do.
And, and we're going to try to reach out to sponsors, financial sponsors. For seven thousand dollars, I think we could, you know, we're, we're really undercutting a lot, but that's, you know, doable, you know, that's just an estimate, so, you know, that's, that's on our.
So is there, so is there any action that the board feels it needs to take on this?
Not, not right now, I don't think. They just got to line up the, with B J. first of all.
Yeah, line up with B J. and, and, and stay out of, stay out of Bill's way.
I, I would just say make, just allow Brandon to continue to work with them to, to bring this.
Absolutely.
And then anything that you need from the board, just bring back to the board and we'll, we'll, if we need a vote for something or whatever, when it gets to the point of needing that.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sounds good.
And I, I wonder if Park and Rec could get on, I know you mentioned.
Oh, I bet you they would.
Yeah, there's a Park and Rec meeting Wednesday?
Wednesday, yes.
So I believe that Chris added that to the agenda, right?
I can, yes.
Okay, good.
That'd be awesome. And then we'll work on, try to get some sponsors and, we already have a lot of musicians ready to go, so.
Good.
You know, making that, but like I said, the nights are, the nights and the times are open for, you know, we just put this together just so we had it, okay, but.
I think it's a great idea.
Me too.
Thank you very, very much.
Wish you all luck.
Yep.
Thank you very much for taking the time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, thank you very much.
Uh, now, do we want to go back to, uh, the town manager report now or next week?
Uh, I'll go ahead and waive it this week now.
I told them I was disappointed, there's only two pages.
So there's a bunch of backup information, um, that you'll notice and, and I can send that to you, Chauncey.
I have it, thank you.
You're welcome.
All two hundred and something pages.
So, uh, the first part of my report this month really deals with some, um, year-end highway department projections and some decisions that we made. Um, looking through the, the highway department, we noticed that we received about eight thousand dollars more in revenue from state highway aid, um, and we expended twenty-five thousand dollars less in regular wages due to a resignation, um, and four thousand less in overtime wages. Similarly, we expended thirty-two thousand dollars less in benefits, FICA and retirement. Um, we project that we'll expend twenty-six thousand dollars less in salt, nine thousand less in paving repairs, and then there's fifty thousand dollars, um, that we didn't use for paving this year, that we're hoping to, um, move into reserves and then expend next year on a, on a paving project. Um, so with all of that information in mind, um, Dave and I had a conversation and we thought that it would be, um, productive to stock up on some things that we need, um, over at the highway department, um, and then also, uh, purchase some culverts and so forth. Um, so we, we went ahead and did that and all of the purchase orders and backup information is in your packet. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Uh, well, the only one I have, everything out, everything on here looks great. The only question I have is the Polycaster sander. Um, and, and I ask this question mainly based on the, on the statute, which says, you know, you shall use it for things that was intended, which you're doing on everything else except for the sander. So if you could explain that, that's all.
Can I contact Ray? He said if anybody had a question, to give him a call, I just want to get clarification from him.
Yes.
All right, one second.
That, that's not for town use?
It's not the point. It, it, it's a, it's a five, almost six thousand dollar purchase. Yes, it's for town use, um, but that's an equipment purchase. Where does it fit in the purchasing policy?
Oh.
Um, because the other stuff is, is, as the statute says, um.
All right, now I see.
You know, things that you raised the money for, where the Polycaster is, isn't one of those, necessarily one of those things.
All right, so I just told Ray to give me a call, um, so I'm going to continue through my report and when he.
Okay.
When he calls me back. Then we'll, we'll answer that question.
So is all, this all stuff that was purchased that wasn't originally in the budget at all? It was, we only purchased this because we had money left over?
Um, yeah, so some of this, there were some areas in the budget that we didn't, um, spend, so some of this stuff we decided to stock up on at the highway department.
But, and the point that I'm making is that these would be things that would normally be in that budget, that are okay by the voters to purchase, which is, but the Polycaster would not fit in that category. Because it, it's, it's new equipment, where the other stuff is chains.
Well, I understand that. Like he's saying he purchased this with money that was left over from different areas.
Well, it's all within the, it's all within the highway department budget that was passed.
Right.
So it.
But it wasn't in, it wasn't in the supplies line. One was in wages. You see what I'm saying? You guys don't do line items?
Well, when it comes to having a surplus, the, the law is two sentences. Um, any money not expended in the year, um, shall be used for the same purpose it was intended the following year. That sound about right?
Yes, but how specific is that?
Correct.
If you have money left over in wages, you have to give everybody a raise. You have money left over in health insurance, do you have to increase the health insurance benefit? It, it, I would not interpret that to mean it has to be spent in the line item that it was originally budgeted.
And I don't either.
I would say that it's money left over in the highway budget that should be spent for highway.
Highway purposes.
So there were, there was, I suspect there was equipment that was budgeted for the highway and, I mean, the voters really approve the bottom line. They don't approve each, each individual line item, although some people might think they do, so that they don't, didn't, they may not specifically approve that piece of equipment, I forget what it was called, but there was equipment in the highway budget, so.
Oh, the Polycaster. I see what, I see what you're saying.
And if this had been the middle of the year and the Polycaster broke, we might have to buy one anyway. And, and this is not surplus.
I got you.
If we spend this money now.
Yeah.
It's not going to be surplus.
Right.
It's not going to be left over at the end of the year.
Well, and when we need these, a lot of these things, next year, they're going to cost us more than they are to buy them right now.
And that's, that's really one of the things that we talked about was, hey, the cost of this stuff is going up. We have what's going to be a surplus at the end of the year. It's, it is what it is. Um, so we decided to take some of the surplus and, and stock up on those items.
Um, Paul, go ahead.
I, I just have a, a question, uh, and I don't know, Joey might be able to help me answer this, or, or John, um, but the aluminum wheels, Ray was just indicating to me out there that aluminum, aluminum wheels are better than, uh, from, for a large truck for putting chains on and things of that nature, that the aluminum wheels are better than the standard steel wheels. Does that ring a bell for anything?
I don't know about chains, but I've heard, uh, I've heard the opposite myself.
That's what I've heard too.
I've known from at least my limited experience around construction equipment, that, um, the steel ones that aren't a Budhub, they're actually a Spokhub, are typically the heavier duty stuff, like on steel man's triaxle.
Yeah.
It's all steel.
Right, well, I don't want to put.
His, his new trailer has aluminum, it's nicer, it's nicer.
Yeah. I'll let Ray speak to that because maybe I could have misinterpreted too, but I think the new dump truck has aluminum on them, right? And then you're purchasing twelve more aluminum wheels, correct?
Yes.
So.
Well, if the truck's already got them, it kind of makes sense to have.
That's what it's for, is those, is replacement for the ones that are on the truck right now.
It is, yes.
Okay, no, I'm just clarifying.
I'm wondering what the sander is going in? Is that going in the, the new? I'm trying to.
I think that's the one ton. Uh, the, 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 I know the sander that they picked up, it, it does a great job, saves a ton of work. The guys over there really do like it, but it seems like every time I go over there, they're fixing something on the dab burn thing. It's old, they picked it up secondhand, they got a good deal on it and we learned something. It's a valuable piece of equipment to have, um, so.
So this is a replacement for the old decrepit one?
We have to get, I don't, I haven't talked to Ray about that to know specifically if that's the purpose, but I, I think it is.
Hey, Ray.
Hi.
Hey, sorry to call you so late. I probably should have kept you in the meeting. Um, hey, there's a question. Well, number one, can you give the board an overview of why we decided to purchase these items? Um, and then also specifically, they're looking to get more information on the Polycaster sander.
Can I interrupt really quick? Does the board need the explanation on everything?
No.
Let's just talk about the Polycaster.
Okay. Only the Polycaster sander. If you could, if you could discuss that a little bit.
Is, is that a replacement, Ray?
I can't hear anybody.
Is that a replacement, Ray?
No. That's a Polycaster sander for the F two fifty, uh, truck.
F two fifty truck?
I can actually sand, uh, affecting roads in the winter time, I can actually put asphalt, just hand it, so that I don't have to go back to the truck. Plus, when I do my file, I can do the, uh, parking lot and stuff with it.
Okay.
Thank you again, Mr. Harrison.
The nice, uh, the old school, like just like that, instead of having a truck have to go there afterwards.
Yep. It, it's for the smaller, the parking lot stuff.
It is for the smaller one?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
Or if I get a call for eighteen L B foot where I can have, I can just put asphalt on that and run it over to it.
Yep.
Would have to call anybody in.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, it'd fit over the narrower roads, like maybe down on Leans Road or something like that. I know places on Thrasher Road gets tight.
We got, that's not installing it, we're going to install it ourselves, pretty straightforward installation.
Yep. Now, is that an electric, or has that got a gas motor on it like the other one?
That is electric, and it also has dual controls, so you can actually speed up the spinner, make a wider cast than if we use the salt. Because the only end mouth, it's on one control. It's the conveyor and the spinner going at the same time, you have to rev it up with the gas, which is.
And where are you at with the?
When that truck gets replaced, it's going to have a dual sander on the F five fifty.
Where's he at with the one that he has now, the used one that he picked up? How's, is that holding up okay?
How is the used one that you picked up? Is that holding up okay, Ray?
Yeah, it's, it takes some improvements, I bet some improvements. The only complaint I have, you go over there to the town office or any big parking lot, you can't just spread the salt and make one pass without rubbing up the ink in, and that makes the main bed go faster, so you actually waste the salt. But other than that, it definitely pays for itself. You could do a whole village and scutney with not even pulling out.
Okay.
With salt. You put it on right after the file, which definitely a big improvement overall we had to pass.
Okay, do we need to authorize this?
No.
You're all set, you're all done?
Yep, I'm all set.
Okay. Kelly, you have any more questions?
Steve?
Steve?
If fifty thousand dollars in paving, if you want to move that to the reserve, that you would need to authorize. Fifty thousand dollars in the budget this year for paving.
Yeah.
We're not going to do a paving project by June thirtieth. So that fifty thousand will not be spent this year. I think the suggestion is that you move, you vote to move that fifty thousand dollars into the paving reserve fund, so you preserve it to be used with another fifty thousand dollars in next year's budget to do a project in next year.
Okay.
I would, I would like to wait until the next select board meeting to make that decision. We're going to be looking more closely at May, and we'll have.
It's not really going to matter, because it still needs to move, as Mr. Hired just pointed out. It needs to move to the reserve, because we're ending the fiscal year.
Yes, but we want to, I want to crunch numbers a little bit more, and just make sure that there's going to be another eighty something thousand dollars left. And we're going to be doing that this week. So the next select board meeting on the twenty first, the decision would have to be made if our projection, if we feel a hundred percent comfortable with those projections. If we move it now and the projections change, then we can't move it back.
Yeah, that's true. So it's fine, it's important, if you need to do it before the end of the fiscal year, or maybe very shortly after the, before we close the block, so you can wait.
Okay.
We'll need to authorize that part.
Okay, so we'll wait on that, everybody's okay?
Yeah.
For now, with that, okay? And you continue with your report.
All right.
Thank you, Ray.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you. I hope it helps.
Yeah. Have a good night.
You too.
Come on. All right, so the next item in my report is reopening Martin Memorial Hall. We, we did hold a meeting and we discussed this a little bit, and it seemed to be the consensus that we would like to reopen Martin Memorial Hall very shortly. And by reopening, I mean keeping the doors unlocked and allowing traffic to flow into the building. Right now, it's by appointment only, and our business is conducted by phone. We want to hold another staff meeting and work out the finer details. And we plan to do that either this week or next week. I think from the input that I heard from everybody, it seems like, well, we would have been ready maybe mid-month. I put July first, but it could be a little bit sooner than that. I just want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable, and we want to work out the finer details. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Nope. Anybody?
Mm-mm. How does the board feel about us reopening?
I, I think, my personal opinion is that between the governor and you, we're probably okay.
Okay. All right.
That's mine, get it open.
The town mechanic study. We, we had a town mechanic study underway, but there has been, I'm unsure whether or not, I'll have that ready by June twenty first. I'll have more information on that coming up. Catalytic converter thefts, I'm sure everyone's heard. We, there's a lot of victims in Weathersfield that are getting their catalytic converters cut out when they go out to start their car, and they realize what's going on. So I just asked that if anybody has any information, or if you see something suspicious when you're driving down the road, it probably is somebody's catalytic converter getting cut out of their car. So if you could kind of stop and take a picture of their license plate or gather any information, the police are trying their best and we're working on it. But it's happening, and it's unfortunate, because people are having to pay a lot of money to replace them. So we're trying to, we're working on it the best we can right now.
Do you, do you, it's going to sound funny, but you recommend calling nine-one-one if they see suspicious activity?
Absolutely. Call nine-one-one, call me, call Bill Daniels, and we'll get out there as soon as possible. But I think, I mean, we got us.
Are they, are they from residents? Are they, are the catalytic converters getting stolen from residents? Or from like parking areas? Like I saw something about a parking area here in town and stuff.
Yes, they're getting stolen from residents and from people traveling to the area. They're getting stolen in Cavendish, Springfield, Windsor, all in our surrounding areas. People stop on the side of one thirty-one to go fishing, and they come back and they, it's already been cut off. They do it so fast. Bill Daniels recommends that you actually spray paint your catalytic converter, because it'll make it so it doesn't have value when they go to sell it, and they might, that might deter them from taking it.
Really?
So.
It gets so hot that all it's going to do is make it smell like paint until you get home.
Oh, no.
Good idea, but.
So if anybody has any recommendations, we're certainly, we have some things that we're doing right now that we think might, might get us to a point where we can catch some people and we have some leads, so we are working on it.
Brandon, do we have security cameras on the firehouse facing towards the parking lot?
We do.
Maybe, I know three people that have left their vehicles at the parking lot and come back with no cats on them.
Really?
Yeah, one of them from Thetford, one from Claremont, and one from in town here.
Well, I know that there's cameras there, but there, we might need to upgrade, upgrade the cameras.
Or even a game camera or something.
Yep.
That you can sneak in the, oh, there's not a tree there anymore, but.
Is it prevent?
Killed the one tree.
Yeah.
I mean, we could use the pavilion to our advantage in that respect, and maybe.
They'll just take that, and then they'll take the catalytic converter, so I mean, it's a no win.
Okay, we're not going to solve this problem tonight, so.
Just be on the lookout.
We're getting late, so.
The next is just a brief on the Roseman Tenny Memorial Park. The State of Vermont Howard Center and Health Department and V Trans Legal have approved the Historical Society's proposed language that will be included on the display board. So I know Olivia was working with Green Screen Graphics today in Doolittle, so we're going to get that printed up and get that display board set up.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Have a good night, Steve. We, other than that, I think there's a couple of bushes that will be planted over there, Olivia.
Correct.
And then we need to, of course, put the signage up stating Roseman Tenny Memorial Park, but that's actually being crafted by, what's his name over there, Woodworks?
Oh, Scott.
Yeah, Scott Duffy.
Scott Duffy.
So he's, he's going to actually be hand carving the memorial signage from the tree itself, so that'll be maybe another month or so, and that'll be put on, on the pavilion. And again, this was all funded by the State of Vermont, so it's not, it's not coming from Weathersfield tax dollars.
Okay. All set?
All set.
Okay, transfer station report.
Just get over to it real quick. All right. So as you know, Paul and I have been working with West Windsor and Reading. When we initially started working with, with West Windsor and Reading, the reason we were doing that is because there's an unequal payment structure across the three towns. West Windsor has been paying as they play. So if there's a resident in West Windsor that wants to use the transfer station, then they buy the permit sticker. And it's not the case in Weathersfield, everybody has to pay the fee to fund the operations at the transfer station. And Reading, they've been consistently allocating eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars, but there was no, there was no room to, as, as the expenses at the transfer station increased, there was no increase in the allocation to, so the burden was really on, on Weathersfield residents. However, looking back at, at the, at what we project they would pay, it's only about a five hundred dollar difference, but the difference for West Windsor is far more significant. So just to kind of brief you on, on what's happened, we, we created this transfer station joint committee, and it's a select board representative from each town, and then we came together and we started studying the operations at the transfer station. DSM Environmental was hired and paid for equally by all three of our towns that conduct a study, and then ultimately I drafted a, a draft transfer station agreement. The goal, of course, is to have an agreement finalized, signed, and implemented before the current permit sticker expires in July twenty twenty-one. West Windsor Select Board Chair Edwin Johnson contacted us via email and stated that because we are strictly enforcing permit stickers to enter the transfer station, the transfer station is operating in a stronger financial footing, and West Windsor is considering remaining with the status quo. From the conversations I have with the select board and, and the way that I feel personally, I didn't ever think the status quo would be acceptable. What we're looking for is a fair and equal payment structure. So I did notify West Windsor, and I told them that the status quo would not be an option. West Windsor Select Board Chair Edwin Johnson summarized some of our discussions to date and explained that West Windsor residents will need to vote on an appropriation at town meeting in March twenty-two. It seems like everything's on board for, for the next fiscal year, but really, we need to determine what we're going to do in the interim. I know that West Windsor Select Board Chair did state that sometimes history isn't fair and equal, and I, I do understand that. But if we move into the next fiscal year and allow the status quo to exist, then we're creating and moving forward with an unequal and, it'll be unfair and unequal history that we're, we're living in. So I need to figure out what the select board is comfortable with for an interim plan. Are we, are we okay until they vote on this next year and allow them to continue paying as they play? Or do we want to set an allocation based on the formula that I suggested in the memorandum and, and tell them that they have to provide the transfer station with an allocation? And maybe that allocation, I mean, based on our findings here, the allocation would be, you know, forty-five thousand. But that allocation formula might be, need to be tweaked a little bit. What is the board, what is the board comfortable with? Additionally, sorry.
No, you're, you're, you're right, if you want to.
Go ahead, go ahead, Brandon.
Additionally, it's difficult. DSM Environmental recommended using this website to determine the number of parcels in each town. Just looking at this parcel data for twenty nineteen, it says the town of Weathersfield has eleven hundred and ninety-seven owner parcels, forty-one rental, and fifty-seven seasonal. We know that isn't true, because we have sixteen hundred and twenty-two parcels. So is the data that we're setting the parcel, the number of parcels on completely accurate? Are we comfortable with using this data to do that? DSM Environmental recommends this website, but we might want to drill into that a little bit more. It all depends. So determining the permit sticker fee, you take the total fixed costs at the transfer station plus recycling, because we don't want to charge for recycling. So that is a variable cost that we're adding into the fixed costs of the transfer station. Fixed costs include personnel, office expenses, and then recycling. So we take the fixed costs, and then we divide that by the total parcels in Weathersfield, West Windsor, and Reading. From that point, we need to determine each individual town's allocation. And we do that by taking the permit sticker fee that we've just calculated and multiplying that by the number of parcels in each town, and that gives you your, your total. So based on using the data that DSM Environmental recommended, and based on the fixed cost of the transfer station, the permit sticker fee would be fifty dollars and sixty-nine cents. Weathersfield allocation would be sixty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, which is down about fifteen thousand. So we're actually paying about fifteen thousand dollars less as a community. So it's difficult to say that the permit sticker would be fifty dollars and sixty-nine cents, because once we divide the sixty-five thousand dollars by the sixteen hundred and twenty-two people, it would actually bring the permit sticker down in this town to, let me just do the math really quick. Probably should have done that before the meeting, sorry. It would actually bring it down to forty dollars in Weathersfield, so it'd be down ten bucks per resident. West Windsor's allocation would be forty-five thousand based on this data, which is about forty-two thousand dollars more than it's been historically. Their Reading allocation would, would increase by like four hundred and something bucks. So I've got a couple of questions here. Will the status quo be acceptable, acceptable to Weathersfield during the interim until West Windsor holds a town meeting in March twenty-two? If the status quo will not be acceptable during the interim, what components is the select board looking for in an interim plan? And then number three, considering the past arrangement with West Windsor, will Weathersfield accept West Windsor purchasing permit stickers as they use the transfer station for the interim? This will require additional work of the transfer station, as the attendants will need to strictly enforce permit stickers in several vehicles. So if you remember, we did this in October, and it caused a huge issue in town. Because when we have to take, yes, we check for permit stickers, but we really had to, we had to like send the police out there and everything to enforce this. So it puts a huge burden on Weathersfield residents, because we have to turn people away if they don't have a valid permit sticker, only to allow for pay as you play. So if we're going to get our revenue from West Windsor, we're going to need to enforce that all year, and it's really going to make some people upset. And we really didn't like doing that before, but we had to prove a point to West Windsor that they did in fact have a lot of people that were using it without paying. So here we are.
Paul?
Okay. Sorry, this might be a little winded, but I've got four comments I want to make. First, I want to let everybody know, if they didn't already, that I'm part of this joint committee. I'm the representative from, from this board. And then we have Edwin Johnson, who's West Windsor, and then Bob Allen, who's, who's Reading. A lot of this discussion's been kind of on the West Windsor side here. We obviously saw an increase in sticker revenue based on when we started doing the monitoring of, of stickers and showing that there's a lot of people buying ones that never used them or hadn't before. But my first, before anybody on the board decides or thinks of anything, I just wanted to give my opinion from being on this board and, and, and doing this. Brandon, the, as you stated in here, I think, the spring of twenty twenty, right? We started this board.
Yep.
All right. The chair of West Windsor now is, well, we can't do anything until we vote in March, from a standpoint of getting, of, of money. So that means to tell me that they just had a vote in March, which was literally two months ago, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this board was started back in twenty twenty-one. I know that first meeting, we didn't have an idea of where we were at, but two months ago, we definitely knew where we're at, and we had these numbers already.
Yep.
So there is no reason that that could not have been discussed, brought up, and actually voted upon, in my opinion, at the March meeting. I think it was just thinking, it's been fine, we'll keep doing what we want to do. The second thing I wanted to ask, Brandon, you have run numbers. If West Windsor is not part of our transfer station, If West Windsor is not part of our transfer station, um, will we be in big turmoil? Or are we, are we, should we be, from what you've run, where do you feel?
I can make, I can make several, we can discuss several different methods to balance the budget at the transfer station. We did just have to put our solid waste contract out to bid, so prices have increased, and I need to look, relook at what FY22 will look at like, and we might have to adjust the punch ticket. In my opinion, of course, we'd be okay. Towns have transfer stations that operate only in their towns all across the United States. There is some things in the budget that we could use to, to balance it, and I think we, I know we would be fine.
Okay.
This would hurt West Windsor because they'd have hundreds of people that no longer have a place to bring their trash.
So, uh, I, I'm sorry, I got two more, two more things. Secondly, we've talked about this parcel, uh, you know, paying for the parcel much as Weathersfield does and so on. Uh, with the DSM, uh, environmental study that they did, they came up with a couple of different option things, hybrid options, looking at this and that. West Windsor, um, talks a lot about, well, we, we don't have all residents, we have camps, we have like places that don't, you know, use the transfer station, so on and so forth. Well, there's people in our town that don't use the transfer station. Um, I look at this personally, it's like a school thing, it's part of the town, it's part of what you're paying. You, you, you know, you, it's your choice not to use it, it's there and it's available, and everybody contributes to that. And Ray's also stated that he knows that there are people that, that like might leave some of these rental places or camps, whatever, and they stop in and dispose of trash or have in the past, um, before needing a complete sticker as using. So you might say, yes, they don't use it all the time, but, um, so my, my, my take on this, because Brandon just gave some data and said, well, you know, where they're getting it from, maybe it's not quite right because our numbers are off a little bit. If we can generate numbers, there's no reason that West Windsor and Reading can't give us the parcel numbers that they have. They're a town, they know every single parcel, they know which one's a rental, they know which one's got just an open field and doesn't. We don't need a number from the state, we can just say, here, what, what is your number? Um, and in fact, it should be public knowledge anyways. Um, so, uh, you know, that, that should be a no-brainer to get those numbers, and then we can do an allocation based on that. And then, uh, my, my fourth and final comment is, my personal opinion, the transfer station is, is, um, an entity, uh, obviously it's in our town, but it's an entity by itself, even in our own town government, it's, it's, it's a...
It's an enterprise fund.
It's an enterprise fund, so it's not, it's in our town, it's our insurance, it's our stuff per se, but it's an enterprise fund. So the way I look at this is, any town that want, that needs to use this, or wants to use this, they pay a fee and they use the transfer station. Not, well, I think this person's gonna, here, I'll buy a little ticket. We have an, we have a number of what we want, 40,000, 30,000, I don't, I don't know. We come up with that, here's what you pay us, then you, then you guys can use it. We'll sign a contract for a year, for two years, I don't know, we'll decide that. It's no different than if we want to use going across, we don't pay every time they, they come over here and do a call.
Yep.
We pay them a fee, it's a done deal. And, and, and that's how I feel this should run, if they want an RFP, we'll generate an RFP for them. They're welcome to go get an RFP at another town if they want. You know, that, that's the way I look at this personally, and those are, those are my feelings, so.
And I just have one thing I'd like to add. If what, if West Windsor does come on board and everything works out, which we believe that it will on FY22.
Yep.
After the town vote.
It looks good.
It will be very beneficial to the transfer station because we'll be able to split the cost up amongst three towns. The partnership is beneficial to the transfer station. But, we need to know what kind of interim plan.
We're gonna figure that out, Joey.
Well, two things, one, as a resident, that, I am somebody that pays to, to go to the dump, and I don't go to the dump. So if somebody from another town can come in and say, oh, I just want to use it, but their neighbor doesn't have to pay, or, you see what I'm saying, pay as you play, that will upset me as somebody who has to pay no matter what. And secondly, as an interim plan, if, why couldn't we sell a, a non-resident dump sticker here at town hall? So we sell the sticker to the resident from West Windsor that wants to use our dump? Rather than go through them?
That's a good point.
We don't have to go through them, we can just still, we'll collect the money.
Yep.
Still, they can use our dump, and you, you cut the West, West Windsor government out of it.
Good.
That's a good idea.
Cause one of my other, um, just off the record kind of thing, we, what we were talking about is, how do you, how do you run this enterprise, how do you run this transfer station? And, um, I do know some people have said, we don't want to be in the, the trash business, but, um, we already have two other towns that are utilizing our tra, our transfer station. Um, and, and I do want to iterate, even with the, the comments that I made, it, it is beneficial at West Windsor. I'm, I'm just, I'm frustrated because I feel like some of the stuff, we could have already had some of the stuff done. But, you know, what if, what if, if we had an out of, out of town sticker like that? Um, you know, who cares if somebody from, that, that wasn't even, they wanted to come use it? Well, I don't care, you're paying the fee like everybody else would be here, and there you go. So I, you know, my, my thought, if we couldn't, uh, we, what other towns could use the dump too? Uh, I mean, I'm open to discussion for all that, because it's a, it's its own enterprise fund. And the, the better we make it, the more we get in it, uh, then we can have more people, we can have a better facility, we can do all that. Not that we want to be in this major, you know, but there are a lot of little towns around here, um, so, that, that's it.
Kelly, anything?
No, I feel the same way he does. I pay, my taxes pay it to it. If they want to use it, they should pay just like everybody else does, plus pay for their ticket.
Yep.
So I, I, I have an opinion.
That you do. Yeah, you do.
Paul, thank you very much for, um, being a member of the committee and, and working YouTube, Brandon. But I agree, I think everybody here agrees. We have this enterprise, which happens to be a recycling center, and it's basically an invite to other towns, regardless if it's, we want to name them, to use it. We, in good faith, tried to reach out to West Windsor, Windsor, or Reading, 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 West Windsor, to try to negotiate and work out terms that were equitable. I don't see that that happened. It seems that, as I think Paul stated it best, they, and you, in the, in the report, that they want to maintain the status quo. Have they considered what their other options are? I, I, I mean, I don't even, that's a rhetorical question, I don't, I don't need an answer to that. From, from this board, I, I think the directive needs to be given that we're gonna do it one way, and only one way. And, uh, that's a great idea, you just had Joey, where, you know, just eliminate their, their government. If anybody up there wants to, through the interim process, if they want to take it to a vote. Personally, I think we just, my opinion is, this is what we're gonna do, you want to use it or you don't. If, if, and if we were to choose to go to the sticker, like you said, the non-resident sticker, they can come by it, but, but now you're back to, well, you're always gonna be back to monitoring that sticker thing.
Yeah, it puts us in the same place, so what we're looking for is an allocation, which is the same in Weathersfield. So every Weathersfield resident has to pay this permit sticker fee. We're telling West Windsor that every West Windsor resident has to pay the permit sticker fee. So if we do do the non-resident sticker, then it will be the same thing as pay as you play.
All right, good, all right, hang on just a second, Joey. Uh, there, there is something I do want to identify in that, and it comes up, I think, from the, the rental units and all of that stuff. We don't do that in Weathersfield, the only thing we exempt is non-developed properties. And I'd like to see a definition for non-developed property. For me, non-developed property could be all the way up to, you have sewer, electric, and water, but no building. Once there's a building, and I don't care if it's a shed, once there's a building there, you've got a fully developed property and you're gonna be assessed, and you're gonna pay for the sticker. I don't care if somebody lives there or not, if you've got all of the infrastructure and a building. Cause somebody could, and, and, you know, up here in hillbillyville, it happens. So, I mean, um, it, it, and I say that, I thought about this today. From the planning commission, we do development, and, and by, by definition, a subdivision is development. But simply dividing a piece of property, and we do not charge for a piece of property that doesn't have a building on.
Yep.
But I don't think we've clarified even for ourselves that, that you can have water, sewer, and electricity, as long as you don't have a building along with it, you don't pay for a sticker. Once you put a building on there, you're paying for a sticker, period. And that's it, that's the only thing that's exempt, that's the only exemption that we're gonna, we're gonna give to anybody. And then we can set the fee, when, when you talked about the number of parcels and whether it's correct, it said homeowners on there, so in my head, I just saw, well, that just means that we have 400 some odd vacant lots, basically, in scattered around Weathersfield. Some of them are fields that are, you know, Fuller's got four, five, six of them, I think. Mr. Fuller, has four, five, six fields that are, they're properties, there's no buildings there, he's not getting, it's, he's not paying an assessment for that. But if you, I, I don't care, you got a rental, you got, you got a building, you're paying. So, I, I mean, in the interim, uh, I, I, I'm not sure there is an interim. For me, there's not an interim. For, for me, there's a decision to be made, this is what it's gonna be, and you're in or you're out. I, I'm there. Joey?
The trouble with that is that it, you're kind of, it'll hurt the residents of the other town by being bullheaded on our end, or his end, or whoever's end. So I do think we need to still offer a non-resident sticker. And I think maybe we stick to our guns and say, yeah, this is what it's gonna be, like it or not, but we still offer the non-resident sticker. I mean, the more people that use this thing, generally speaking, is gonna make it cheaper on everybody.
Oh, absolutely.
So, the other thing, a non-resident sticker might cost more than a, a Weathersfield sticker.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
You know, you've got, well, by the looks here, you've got almost as many non-Weathersfield parcels as you do Weathersfield parcels that need to pay.
So, if I, if I may quickly, uh, West, West Windsor charges their residents...
60 bucks.
60 dollars a sticker, just FYI.
Yeah.
So even though they're using, less than we do, they're charging more.
The, the only problem I have with the non-resident sticker is, what you're saying to other towns is that we're not gonna assess you like we do the residents of Weathersfield. So why do we not allow that in Weathersfield? Not assess anybody in Weathersfield and allow, and, and then just allow them to come in? And, and the answer to that, it, I believe, is the, the amount of extra work that, that, that comes from all of that. You know, it's a logistical nightmare.
It is.
Of, of selling and retaining and stickers.
Yeah, I don't think we want to take that up in the office. I, I don't know.
I, I don't want you to.
Because then we really, we have individual residents coming to us all day.
That, that's correct.
That are not Weathersfield residents, and we're, we're using Weathersfield tax dollars to pay our people to then...
And you've, and you've, if I don't, if you, if I can, you've, and we've totally lost sight of the fair and equitable purpose of this whole conversation.
Yeah, because if we were gonna offer a non-resident sticker back in spring of 2020, this, none of these discussions would have taken place.
Right, and it's not changing for Weathersfield.
But I think in the interim, we need to do something. We either need to say, hey, this is the lump sum amount that you have to pay, or hey, the status quo is okay until this date, or...
I, I think we have...
We just need some kind of resolution. They have been discussing this at the select board level, and I, I believed in the last meeting, they did make a good faith attempt, and then they discussed going to the voters in March.
Yep.
So if approved, then there will be a larger allocation coming to the transfer station in, in the next fiscal year, it would.
That's not helping this year any.
Well, but, but, but I'm gonna go back to something I said to Mr. Arison earlier tonight, and that is that sometimes at this table, which they have one, you have, you make decisions.
Yep.
And, and you have to make those decisions for the best interest of your residents. So they're gonna have to grapple with that and make a decision. That's, I, I don't see that as being bullheaded, I, I...
Oh, but...
Pull up your big boy pants, make a decision.
Yeah, the residents will suffer.
And, and, what residents are gonna suffer, and how?
The ones that use the dump, if we don't come to an agreement, they're, where are they gonna go? What are they gonna do with their trash? Call somebody and then never use our dump again?
They get the callers, they get to call the town office, they get to call their representatives, and they get to complain, and they get to vote for somebody else.
And then they get to call a trash company, get regular pickup, and never use our dump again in the interim.
Maybe, maybe not, maybe, maybe not.
And it will cost a lot... It will cost a lot more, but to somebody that needs to get rid of their trash, yes, we can say the permit sticker is 50 bucks divided by 12 months, it's $4 a month. But that doesn't help them if they can't even obtain one. They're gonna say, I'm gonna spend the 30, or 40, or 50 bucks a month, and they're just gonna come pick it up at their door. I mean, it's gonna cost them significantly more, but thinking logically as a person that needs to get rid of their trash.
They're gonna get rid of trash.
They're gonna get rid of their trash. I don't think it's, I don't think they're gonna let it build up.
No, they won't, Paul.
So, I, I do, I do want to say, like I said, I, before, I, I agree with Brandon wholeheartedly. Being on this board, I, I, I am, I vented some frustration of, of, of how things have maybe gone, but, um, I do feel, even from West Windsor, uh, own admission that, that the contract that, that Brandon has drafted, even though it killed a lot of trees, um, is, is definitely, we're almost there. Um, the problem is, I feel we got, we, I, I do feel we got pushed into a corner to, to wait a whole other year before this thing happens. I, I, I don't have a real good recommendation, we need something in the interim. You know, West Win, West Windsor's definitely stated the fact that, you know, they, they feel it's fine to be status quo, but then again, you know, we, we are almost there. It's just, the problem is, is the voting time, like, we could come up and, and, and validate this contract in two more months, but we can't do anything until they go to the voters to get that money. And at that point, they still might not get the money and say, we don't, which is fine, then they don't get to use it anymore after that. Or they, they get it, and then we're, we're where we want to be, and, and everybody is putting it in. So, I, I, I think it, it's, it's really hard, we need an interim something, or...
I, 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 I'm sorry, I look at this as, as, um, the interim plan is, you do the same thing that we do, and when you go to town meeting in March 22, if you don't like it, vote to opt out?
Well...
Vote to go away?
If, if, if that happened to us, let's just say, I mean, couldn't we hold a special vote here and come up with some money if we needed to, to do something, even though it's not in the voters thing? Is there, I mean, there's, there's the rainy day funds, there's, I don't know, all of them that you could be using, but, I don't know what their town structure is.
But that's our government.
No, no, I, I know, I don't know how theirs is, but...
I mean, I'm not, I'm not ignoring what Joey's saying, I don't want to cause any, I don't want to cause hardship for, for residents, but, fair and equitable.
Mm-hmm, yep.
It's not fair and equitable, hasn't never been for Weathersfield. And I understand it's a, a, a leap for them and, and a cost and expense that, do they want to use our facility or not?
They do see it as a valuable facility, and it's been like this for so long that they just, they became accustomed to this form of payment. And now we're, we, we're, we're almost there to where it's gonna, we're creating a fair and equal payment structure. We've created this transfer station joint committee.
Yeah.
And they did mention that it would be difficult for them to go to the voters in March of this year because of COVID and ask for an increase in taxes. Whether or not that's a good excuse or not.
I, I don't, I, 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 we, we call this an enterprise fund. Why is it an enterprise fund? Because it's not tax dollars, it's user dollars. It, it, it's, yes, we assess all properties for the sticker in our town that have a building. Use it or don't use it, like Paul said, the school system, um, the highway budget. What if I, what if I walk everywhere I go through the woods, I don't use the highways, and I don't have a car?
Police, fire, yep.
You know, but whatever. Electric, we got that coming up with electric cars, how are they gonna fund the, the highways if, if they're not buying gasoline? Because that's, it's tax dollars from purchasing gasoline helps to support the roads. I don't know, um, what is the board's, uh, what do you want to do with this tonight? Any, any, Kelly?
I want to know if, does, do you guys have any suggestions? What do you guys? What do you guys think? You guys are the ones that are sitting on these committees. What do you think we should do?
I I'll I'll be honest with you. Um, I I have thought about a motion or or how to do it, and besides my frustration of feeling like we were backed into it, I I I don't have a good answer. I half of me doesn't wanna just cut ties completely because we are this close. If we were this far away, I'd be like, yeah. But that we we are working, it's just. We, as I said, we could have another con- we could have the contract figured out in a couple of months, maybe, maybe, I don't know. But they're not gonna get any different allocations from West Windsor until they get a vote, and then even then, it still might not pass. So I, you know, um. That doesn't help you. I'm sorry. I didn't answer your question directly. I just I I don't have a good answer either. I this is a very, I mean, it's it's a political thing. We can we can just say no, and we're done, and like Joey says, you we could be losing altogether. Um, can we survive without? Sure. Would it be painful? Sure. Is West Windsor beneficial? Absolutely. We've we've seen it. We know it, and 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 West Windsor has indicated how beneficial this transfer station is to them and their town also. Um, you know, governments change, could be a whole different select board next time around anyways that we deal with. I mean, that's the thing. Um, frustration now could be really easy next time. I don't know. Um.
I think we've been we've been allowing this form of payment for a very long time. I think the transfer station opened in nineteen eighties or something.
One or something, maybe.
This is the agreement that previous select boards and town managers and so forth had with West Windsor. And then now we're coming forward, the previous select board and the previous town manager wanted to create an equal payment structure. When this select board came in, which Kelly, you were in here at that time, um, they also wanted us to create a fair and equal payment structure. I think you would agree that we need to do that. So we've been working on this for for a while to figure out what that would look like, and COVID and, you know, we held, we had a DSM environmental study, and we've studied this to death. Um, and now we're in a position to where we feel like we're really close to having an agreement, but that vote can't take place until March unless they call a special town meeting. So.
Brandon, I.
I'm sorry.
Hold on, please. Uh, thanks, Paul. Um. So have you put together anything that looks at, um, what if Weathersfield did the same thing that West Windsor and Redding do, where we don't have the sticker go out with the tax bill? And we only sell them. What does that cost in the office? What does the sticker cost become? What does the punch card become?
Sticker cost would be like.
What losses do we have from that if because you're gonna stop um, giving stickers to people that aren't using it that are paying in Weathersfield?
In my opinion, our transfer station would close.
It would fail.
It would fail.
Okay.
I'm ninety percent sure.
Okay, so number one, we have a survey from several years ago that the people don't want that. They want to keep they the people of this town wanna keep that open.
Yep.
Um.
And why would it fail? I mean, it would be so hard to for me to budget that because I would do so not knowing how many users we would have.
I what what I'm what I'm getting at is, have you been able to present to that town that, wait a minute, if we do it the way you're doing it, fair and equitable, Weathersfield does it the same way you do it, your sticker's gonna cost you seventy-five or eighty dollars, punch cards are gonna go to five, six, yeah, okay, so. So if you wanna keep it the status quo, this is what the status quo is gonna cost you, or you do it our way.
Yep.
Okay, and and there's your interim argument. You make a decision.
Well, I think, you know, I think if all West Windsor residents received a permit sticker in the mail, then I think more people in West Windsor would use it. Um, it would be very valuable to the residents of that town and valuable politically, in my opinion, to have a transfer station that they can they can use. Um, because right now it's pay as you play, and when you do that, some people don't even know how to obtain a permit sticker. I mean, think about it. Um, some people don't know to go to the town office and pay sixty bucks and then buy a punch ticket and do all of these things. Um, so if they just receive it, then they can enter. Um, I think we're really close to that. It's it's difficult because you want to say here's an allocation, pay it, but it almost seems unfair in a way to do that. Because it's so rash. I don't think they've expected us to do this. Um. But then on the other hand, we've been working on this in spring twenty twenty. And Weathersfield residents have to pay the allocation, so we could argue that they also have to pay the allocation because that is fair and equitable.
Paul?
I just I so two things. I I have a feeling if if the board votes that they need to pay an allocation right now, I think West Windsor will will pull out. They'll have to because they don't have the money, and they won't have the the vote. Um, I just, you know, so that.
Why wouldn't they have the money? It would go out on their tax bill.
No, no, so they've already done their voting, and they've already done their fiscal years, uh, like January to January. It's not July.
But it's not it's not a budget item. It's it's a it it it's it's not a budget item.
So if we said that right now, and then these stickers come up July first, and we tell West Windsor, meantime, they can go get money.
You add it as a separate line item on your tax bill. But it's not a tax. It's 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 a user fee per parcel.
Right, but I think what they have to do is vote to do that, and their voting already has gone by, the town vote. We couldn't just add to the tax bill right now, can we?
I don't think that. I don't. I would have to clarify that through town council, but I.
I would like you to do that.
I don't think you can.
Let me take a look at that. I don't know if we could just say.
That that's that's I'm sorry. That's my indication of how how it's gone. But secondly, um, I I we are close. I'm just gonna say we are close, and, you know. Let people, I mean, let people know that come the next time around.
All right. Are you guys?
How much in the hole are we gonna end up with if they don't pay us between now and when they vote again next time?
I don't think we'll be in the hole because we adjust the punch ticket and permit sticker fee based on the fixed cost of the transfer station. We did budget based on our previous solid waste contract because we had no idea what the bids were gonna come in. You just can't really predict that until the bids come in. Um, so the bids have come in. We do have to tweak the transfer station budget. Um, but there's things that I can do to to balance it. Um.
I I'd also have like to have you look into how we got into this place with that assessment on our tax bill. Was that done by a vote, or was that done by this board back when that when that started? Because that's gonna be in the record somewhere. Olivia?
Does that mean that the punch cards are gonna go up in cost because the Casella, because we changed to or because the expenses are more so is our punch card is gonna go up for in town?
I get nervous on that, to be honest with you.
Because if we.
We. We need to, so that's that's part of what we have to do between now and the next select board meeting, is we have to drill into those numbers and and then we have to.
I'd hate for that to go.
I just I wanna clear, and I apologize for, I just wanna clarify to anybody that's listening, anybody that's there. It's not because of the vote between Casella or Alva. It was Alva was actually uh, cheaper than the Casella was this time around for this this cycle. Um, so.
Thank you.
No, I just.
Well, well, another thing that we need to keep an eye on is, as you raise that punch card price, you start seeing more garbage on the side of the road.
No.
That that inevitably happens.
And that affects the Weathersfield residents directly.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does, and we'll start spending the tax dollars to pay the highway crew to pick it up.
Mm-hmm.
And and then we'll be just paying to dispose of it, because that's where it goes, over to the transfer station.
Yep.
So you 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 there's there's a fine line there. Joey, you got something else?
Yeah, how how does Reading feel about West Windsor being able to pay as they play, but they are paying an allocation?
Good question.
Because if I were Reading, I would say, well, then that's what I wanna do.
I think I can't speak for Bob Allen, but, um. I mean, it did it doesn't seem fair if I had to.
It just is two-thirds unfair, the way I see it, to let West Windsor do this. I I worry about their residents and the lasting effects of what this interim period's gonna do, but the more I think about it, I kinda agree with Mike, is you gotta just say, this is what it is. We don't draw a line at some point, then it's just gonna be kick kicking the can down the road. Next year will be something else, and and they might pull out altogether anyways after we give them a year, not give, but.
Yep.
But you know what I mean? They might use up their year and then say, nah, we're all set.
So what do you think about me drafting a letter from the select board and I to West Windsor? And with our interim plan, I'll present three different letters to you in the next meeting of three different types of plans that we could move forward with.
What are those three plans?
Um, we could do different ways of parcel counts. Um, the formula, or do you wanna use?
What I don't like that, Brandon. I think I've laid out in a way that says either we're all gonna pay as we play, and the dump's gonna close, or we're all gonna pay an allocation, and the dump's gonna stay open. Up to you.
Or you either pay the allocation.
Just, yeah.
Or you're you're out by this date. We won't, our permit sticker expires in July.
Yep.
Yeah, July first.
We can write them, we can write them a letter and let them know if you don't pay your fair share, and then, of course, we'll put the correct amounts that they would have to pay.
You could start right off by saying, I apologize for interrupting you, sir.
No, you're fine.
Uh, you could start right off by saying that we're no longer gonna do a non-resident, for lack of a better term, sticker. It's by allocation, by law. The only exemption is development. Put that in clear terms, and here's what it is.
Are they allowed to, how how does the board feel about due dates? Reading pays in March of twenty twenty-two. And then Weathersfield pays in July of this year.
Oh, West Windsor, March, right.
Well.
So Reading is.
We're we're talking about a fund that we put money in, and and you know, the money will come when it it'll it'll be there, right? I I mean, things will function, and the money will be there, right?
What should we give them for a due date in the case that they do need to hold a special town meeting? Do you wanna do, we can extend their existing permit sticker until October thirty-first?
How are you gonna know who, how do you how do you gonna know that that sticker is from?
You're not.
No.
From West Windsor.
Can't do it that way. It has to be the same as everybody else.
It does, yeah.
They know it's coming. They just they just prolonging the agony.
Yeah, and it feels, for me, my guy is telling me it's a strong arm until they eventually say, no, we're not gonna pay that anyways.
And you've already said that we're not gonna collapse if they do.
Okay.
And and so all this pointed, there are other towns we could reach out to.
Well, I I don't know. I'm just saying we could.
We could.
They haven't talked to me, and I'm not saying we wanna do that.
So I'm gonna I'm gonna send West Windsor a letter and let them know that based on the formula we've created, I'll give them an amount that will be due on a specific date. And if that amount of funding is not paid, then their permit sticker expires, and they're no longer allowed to use the transfer station in Weathersfield.
And it was September first. Is that when those are start, the new ones, or is that August first?
No, there's no, our new ones are August first. No, uh, July first.
July.
July first.
I never paid attention to the date. I just stuck it on the window.
Fiscal year ends June thirty.
So so we'll have Brandon draft that, and we'll vote on it next time, or do you wanna vote now for some reason, or?
Um, I'll draft the letter. Um, we may wanna hold an emergency meeting next week to review and approve the letter and then send it out.
And also like a full board.
Yeah, it'd be nice to get Dave.
I'd like a full board, too.
Yeah, yeah.
To figure out what Dave would.
I I know Dave's position on it. It's pretty much what we just said.
All right, well, I'll draft that letter, and then.
Thank you.
We'll see if we wanna hold an emergency meeting next week.
Yep.
Just for the letter.
That's that's fine, as long as it's shared, it's fine.
Send it to them on the twenty-first. It just gets later and later, and it I think we really need to let them know as soon as possible.
I I mean.
I do, too, as soon as possible. And I just I wanna also just quickly let everybody know that we did just have a a a meeting uh, with the three towns, um, and we did indicate that we'd be talking about this tonight, and we invited the three towns, uh, the other two towns, Reading and 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 West Windsor, and I don't think I see anybody from from West Windsor, or Reading was pretty much, you know, they were good there, so. Just as an FYI.
Rock rock and a hard place, but.
That's what we got put in.
It is.
It is a it is a pickle, and and I do feel some concern. Could I have a motion to extend the meeting?
Motion to extend the meeting by thirty minutes.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Good.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Um. Um, consider a vote to approve the application for fireworks display. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the application for fireworks display. This is pretty cut cut and dry, right?
Yeah, and I talked to both fire chiefs and the police chief tonight, and they approved.
Everybody's okay?
Yep.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Uh, personnel policy discussion. Uh, we get ten. We've got work at home policy. We've got ARPA discussion, proposed future agenda items. We got three topics. So let's uh, let's try to limit our discussion time to about ten minutes each. We'll still need another extension, but hopefully it won't be more than ten or fifteen minutes.
I think we can actually, for the case of the personnel policy, I just updated the personnel policy with our discussions from last week. Um, there was some mention that we also wanted to take up the opt-out policy, um, so I highlighted it. Um, it's up to the board. We can table this and wait until the full board's here to discuss the personnel policy um, and and dive into that a little bit, or if you guys wanna discuss it a little bit tonight.
I I.
Paul, I just quickly, is it would this be a second reading for that, needing needing three readings, or would that or would this, how would that go?
We started the readings.
No, we won't do any readings until we review the up opt-out policy, because once we start those readings.
Okay, so then.
We have to include everything we want to change.
In the readings.
And then do a first reading, a second reading, and a third reading.
Then I'd say we wait.
Put it on hold.
We put this on hold until the full board's here.
Yeah, I I I agree. We'll move we'll move item ten, personnel policy discussion, to uh, future agenda items.
Yep.
Yep.
Um.
I did the same with the work at home policy, too, but.
Um, yes, no, you wanna talk about that at all, Brandon? Work at home policy, you need that?
I think we can go another meeting with that.
You you think you can go another meeting with that, Paul? How do you feel about it?
I I, yeah, I I'm fine with that. I'd like a full board here for that, too, and was there any big changes to it, or just was that a second reading? Did we were we making changes? I don't remember where we were at.
I I can kinda update that a little bit from my recollection, which is, uh, we the this board kind of at the last meeting, uh, um, uh, Brendan has created a policy. I think about the only part of it that's really in discussion right now is extended work from home, which this board was pretty uh, pretty set against.
Yep.
Okay, and we received a letter from, um, Chris Whitten. Did anybody, did that change anybody's mind? Joey, did did you get a chance?
I don't know if I got that. I'll have to look.
It's it's in the packet.
Oh, then my apologies. I didn't. I have not read that.
Okay, so so then we we will go ahead and and postpone discussion on uh, the work at home policy until uh, the full board is present, and Paul, you've had a chance to review that letter.
I apologize. That's my fault.
You're okay. Uh, ARPA discuss uh, discussion, Brandon? Anything on that? It's.
Yeah, so I I put a ton of material in your packet on the ARPA funds. Um, the bottom line is, we we have, there's no need to rush and try to figure out what to spend this money on. I think we need to have very careful discussions and use the money in a way that will benefit the town for a long time. Um, the select board does need to appoint an authorized representative of the town. Um, usually that would be the town manager or or the treasurer. Um, Steve said that he would prefer the authorized representative to be myself because he only works ten hours a week. Um, we don't have to do that tonight, though. I'd like to give you guys some more information on what the scope of work of that authorized representative would be, um, so you have an idea of what what that would consist of. the scope of work of that authorized representative would be. Um, so you have an idea of what what that would consist of. Um, looking through the PowerPoint, there's some there's some things that require select board action. Um, we definitely want to hold um, some public hearings and and get input from the town. Um, there is also other grants that are available, so you could actually use ARPA funds to leverage other grant opportunities and and grow the money a little bit more. Um, so, you know, say there's a grant out there for for X and you can get two hundred thousand dollars if you use two hundred thousand dollars. Now you have four hundred thousand dollars for X.
Isn't he good?
So I think I think that's definitely something we we should take into consideration, using the ARPA funds to leverage other funds um, and put a plan together for that. But really, we need to figure out, you know, what does the town ultimately wanna use the funding for, and then we can start figuring out how we can grow the money.
So we got work ways to go on that. It's like you said, there's no rush on any of that stuff.
No rush. We have plenty of time.
Brandon, something that jumps out to me is investing in water and sewer infrastructure.
Yes.
We have, well, as of last year, we just expanded the boundaries
Yes.
of the town water system.
Yep.
Maybe worth looking into and and at least consider it.
I a hundred percent agree with you.
On both sides, actually.
And what that's gonna require, so the town's getting some money. And what the town would have to do is that the water district's not getting any money.
Right.
So the select board would have to say, we're gonna give X to the water district. But before we do that, we really wanna know because there's other grant opportunities out there for the water district right now as well, what do those grant opportunities look like? And how much money should we give the water district to be able to leverage that other grant funding? Because it might not even be much. It could be a twenty-five percent match.
Yeah.
And then we could get a lot more money by pushing that over to them. Um, then we also have to take into consideration the fact that not the whole town has water. Um, town water, so.
Not everybody uses a dump either.
Yeah.
Just saying.
So there's a lot of good reading here, and then at the end, there's a Q and A. This this took place at a VLCT meeting, um, so there's some questions and answers um, from VLCT. The questions came from town managers and treasurers and highway superintendents and fire and police chiefs across the state. So there's some good questions, some good answers there. Um, I think it gets us started, um, but definitely there's no need to rush, so I think, you know, read through some of this material and we'll have it on the next agenda, too.
Okay. Proposed future agenda items. You all set with that over there? Brendan?
Yeah, all set.
Um, appointments. Do we have any appointments to consider?
There will be several appointments on the next agenda.
Okay.
Um, there's a couple that moved to town, um, and one of them wants to be on the budget committee. The other one is thinking about the planning commission. Did you talk to him today?
Mm-hmm. Yep, they're both very interested, Parks and Rec.
So they they seem like they have a lot of talent. Um, and uh, we were gonna try to get them on the agenda tonight, but since it wasn't warned, we decided not to really push for that, and we'll put it on the next agenda and you guys can can meet them at that time.
Okay.
They sent us a request for appointments to a couple of different boards and committees, so.
And these these are people moving into town?
Yep, they just moved to town. I think they.
What kinda what kinda boards and committees they wanna be on?
Parks and Recreation, Planning Commission, Budget Committee, and a couple others that are just already full, so we can't. But maybe next year.
Can can I I I'm I'm gonna say something. Um,
I know you're going.
If I may, um, and I may, I'll try to be quick. Um, I I think it's great that that people get involved. I I mean, Paul's been great since 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 Lina harassed him at the local restaurant. It's great to have Kelly. She's new and 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 so is Joey, uh, to some degree. Um. When you're in last year, right?
Some degree.
First year, no, so that's all I meant by that. Um, uh, but when when somebody moves to town and wants to be on a board that writes the laws that we have to live by, I have a concern for that. It doesn't mean they wouldn't be good and it and and it might be better than me or Paul, if I'm even good at all. Hey, that rhymed. I could write a song. Um, but I I think it's a stretch to have somebody move to town and start writing laws that the residents of this town that have lived here for how many years?
They did move here a year ago. I mean, I'll we'll give them a year, but they it's they said very recent, but a year.
Okay, I would still, for me, I would still feel more uh, uh, Budget Committee, yes. Recreation Committee, yes.
Yeah.
Um, you know, things like that. But I I think when you start getting into legislating laws, you you ought to know some people and know some things and be acclimated to the town. That is my personal opinion, and and I don't know if anybody agrees with me or not, but that's just what I think.
The only other quick thing on that I'd like to say is just remember that all the boards, there are multiple people on a board, so it's not one person that makes that law, that decision. So it is a five-person vote on most boards, uh, seven or whatever you're depending.
I I do know that.
I I I know you know that. I'm just putting I'm I'm countering your, right? So but as of right now, there is nothing in policy or nothing in.
Well, actually, there is a a one piece that actually supports your argument, which is legislation that states the planning commission does not have to be made up of all residents. You know, somebody from Ludlow could be on our planning commission. It's not a requirement by law. The requirement under the law is that the majority of the board is made up of residents. That's what the statute says.
We don't have people banging our door down.
No, we don't, and that's okay, and I don't know these people and I don't I don't I'm not assuming that they're they'd be bad. This is a general uh, just observation of my own. I I.
So you don't want Brandon on the planning commission with your own.
Well, Brandon?
Yeah.
He can't.
You see my point, though.
Um. We can talk about that in executive session.
Anyways.
Personnel. Anyway, somebody wanna I I I we're getting punky here and I wanna get back to business and get us wrapped up. Could somebody do the warrants, please?
Sure, I guess.
Motion to approve the warrants of uh, June the seventh, Paul?
Twenty twenty-one, June the seventh, twenty twenty-one. Um, for um, the general fund, uh, payroll is fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-two twenty-one cents, and operating expense is forty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-one fifty-two cents. Highway fund payroll is seven thousand nine hundred and forty-eight and ninety-three cents. Operating expense is twenty-two thousand eight hundred and one dollars and eighty-five cents. Uh, solid waste management fund is payroll is one thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. Operating expense is fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. Um, library for a total of uh, payroll one thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents, and operating expense is zero. Uh, police cruiser radio operating expense looks like four thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighteen cents. For grand totals of payroll is twenty-six thousand uh, three hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-three cents, and operating expense grand total is eighty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-four cents.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the warrants. Any discussion?
Uh, one second. Rosalie, uh, do you wanna say something?
Yep.
Go ahead, Rosalie.
Oh. Well, I I was asked to update the warrant this morning and I added three bills to it. I don't have the updated copy in front of me, um, but the updated copy, I I put it in the folder that usually goes downstairs to the meeting. Um, so if you have the printed out copy to sign, that is the most updated warrant.
Uh.
Is there a significant change?
Yeah, let me see.
Yeah, there were a couple of bills that.
Well, it's more.
What did we add to this warrant, Rosalie? Do you remember?
We added, yep, we added, um, the, I believe it was a Pete Jarvis LLC, um,
Yes.
he did some trucking to the Tenny Memorial. I added our copier lease, which is about three hundred dollars, and then I added our um, IT bill as well, which is, I I believe about twenty-five hundred, and the the trucking was thirteen hundred.
So.
What what is it? So highway fund would have changed?
Yep, and and.
Actually, no, the highway fund wouldn't have because it's the memorial, it's the Tenny, so it's reimbursed by the state.
Got it.
So. What had happened is two Jar- two Jarvis's worked on the Tenny Memorial and we we didn't pay Peter, um, but we paid.
That's it. It's it's.
So uh, so what we need to do is then we need to amend the motion for um, the general fund payroll looks like it stayed the same. Rosalie, you can uh,
Yeah, the only thing that changed was the general fund.
Yeah, so the general fund operating expense, um, we need to change that to, and I I'm sorry, I can't see that. It's fifty-three.
Fifty-three thousand ninety-two dollars thirty-seven cents.
Sorry, I don't have my glasses on.
Payroll stays the same?
Payroll stays the same, and everything else stayed the same.
Okay.
So just that operating expense for uh, general.
Grand total at the bottom changes to?
Yep, grand total at the bottom changes to ninety-five.
Ninety-five thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars nineteen cents.
I'll bring my glasses next time.
Okay, so so, um, Joey, you second that? You okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second with corrected numbers. Uh, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Rosalie. Great job.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Um, do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
Someone.
Someone.
So at nine eighteen?
So I just end the call, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Do we need to bring anybody into it? I don't I don't know what it's about.
I don't mind.
Brandon Brandon will be coming into it. Um, do you do you need Olivia there?
I don't mind if she stays so she can lock up the building. I don't think there's anything.
It doesn't, no, it doesn't.
She and I have a.
She she knows most of everything. I want you to stay to lock the building up.
Well, Olivia and I do.
That's a guy for you.
Just as an FYI, we do have a confidentiality statement drafted by town council that she's she and I both signed, so anything that we speak on
Gotcha.
is confidential legally.
Okay.
That wasn't that wasn't on the agenda.
You're you're holding him to that, right?
Yes, absolutely.
I think you signed that on like the first week or something.
Yes.
I still have it in my.